Okay, I will call to order the June 8, 2021 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting, and we'll start with a flag salute, please, if you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item is the consent agenda. This is a motion that includes a variety of different items, all intended to be passed in one motion, but the board is happy to pull any that you want us to discuss individually, and we are pulling 24A that will be on a future agenda. So does the board have any others that they'd like pulled? Is there anyone from the public could like us to discuss something independently? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Holmes, second. Gustafson, roll call, please.
Gore.
Aye.
Holmes.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Wygant.
Yes, thank you. Next is public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action. But if you do have something, just come forward and state your name for the record, please.
I have some packets for the board, can I?
If you can give that to the clerk. Thank you.
Do I gotta hit a button up here or goes automatic? All right. So, good morning. My name is Jason Wedge, and I speak on behalf of the residents of Placer County that are here with me today and watching this meeting live. Our mission is to restore our state of California and local community, giving power back to the people. It's been far too long that the government entities have failed to represent the electors of this county in the capacity in which we now demand. We have stood back and allowed state and local government to make decisions on our behalf without consideration to what we, the people, want and need. Instead, state and local government has far overreached your power, and it is time today this comes to an end. We are here to watch, listen, and engage in every single decision made on our behalf, and the changes needs to be made, we will make them. We are here to ask for your support, our efforts, and align with our requests. As we are the electors of the state and county, we have collectively decided to take action to regain our state, county, city, and most importantly, our freedoms. We are here today to specifically address a few points that have recently come to our attention and feel it is imperative we reach a resolution within 30 days. We respectfully request that Placer County pass an ordinance that explains and details how AB 262, now Cal Health and Safety Code Section 120175.5 will be implemented within Placer County. Specifically, we need clarification that Section 120175.5 will never be implemented to permit the county of public health officers to remove citizens of Placer County from their residence under any circumstances unless that citizen's own primary care physician or physician elected by the resident has determined that the resident is currently infected with a communicable disease that poses a significant threat to the community and that citizens must be afforded all due process rights under the law. We are willing to work with the county on the language to be adopted and even provide them with a draft of the interpretation of California Health and Safety Code Section 120175.5 that needs to be adopted. We submit that if the board members cannot agree to adopt such a limitation within the following 30 days by the way of addressing the public and BOS meeting agenda items, give the series abridgement of freedom that California has undergone over the course of the past 15 months, then efforts will be undertaken to remove and/or recall those board members who cannot agree to this extremely reasonable request. We know this meeting and all the board of supervisory meetings are recorded, and we ask that nothing is edited or removed from the recording when uploaded for future review, and that all meetings are conducted in accordance to the Ralph Brown Act. In closing, from 1851, Placer County was the leader in the creation of this great state of California from the Gold Rush to the railroad. It's no wonder why we are routinely identified as one of the healthiest counties in California, and we consistently ranked as the top counties for having the best quality of life in the state. Let's restore the sentiment today. We ask that you show leadership, listen to your electors, and align with us, and let's restore the sentiments today.
Thank you.
So I have a statement in relation to that.
And if you could just state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Jacqueline Lostrito.
Thank you.
All right. Placer County residents believe there's a planned systematic attempt to force residents to get the shot through AB 262, AB 389, and Patient Access and Interoperability Final Rule, CMS 9115F. We would like to understand how AB 262 that was passed on October 19, 2019, is related to Placer County 2122 fiscal budget, which supports CMS 9115F. The CMS final rule requires hospitals, counties, and physicians to provide to the government patients medical information, including but not limited to patient's current address, medical clinical notes, and most concerning, our immunization records. AB 262's language is vague but clear. It gives the local county health officer full discretion and power to issue orders to other governmental entities within the local health officer's jurisdiction to take any action the local health officer deems necessary to control the spread of the communicable disease using taxpayers' money, and even when the communicable disease is based on faulty tests results. Any action can include removing you or family members from your home if the California governor or HHS local agency deems any person a threat to public health. AB 389 authorizes a fire protection district to enter into a written subcontract with a private ambulance service and authorizes a county to develop an emergency medical services program, and requires a county developing such a program to designate a local EMS agency that is required to be county health department, required to be the county health department, an agency established and operated by the county. Article 11, Sections 4 and 5 of the California Constitution provide that charter cities and counties may develop ordinances to govern local affairs, and further, that ordinances passed by these entities take precedence over conflicting state laws as to local affairs, such as the county health officer's decisions surrounding the implementation of Cal HSC We, the people of Placer County, request you, the Placer County Board of Supervisors, pass an ordinance that explains how AB 262 will be implemented within this county. As a consequence of the foregoing, we respectfully request that this county approve, adopt, and ratify an ordinance that clearly interprets Cal HSC 120175.5 as follows. Section 120175.5 will never be interpreted to, one, permit the county public health officer to remove citizens of Placer County from their residences under any circumstance unless that citizen's own primary care physician or a physician elected by the resident, chosen by the resident to be removed, has determined that said resident is currently infected.
And I'm sorry, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
Yep. With a communicable disease that poses a significant threat to the community, which a false positive on a COVID test does not create a threat. And, two, that citizens must be afforded all due process rights under the law, irrespective of any emergency powers Placer County purports to be operating under. We are also requesting the Placer County Board of Supervisors take our concerns to the State Assembly by submitting our letter that was provided to you requesting the immediate stop on any further action on AB 262. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address something not on, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Brenna Toppenberg. I'm here representing New California State. I've lived in this community for 48 years, and never have I witnessed anything such as devastating as this. We have the members of communities and groups that are watching what you all have been elected to do. You've been elected to defend our rights. We defend ourselves. We defend our immune system and our bodies. Our rights have been ripped away right now, and we're finding out, it's just immediate, it's right under our feet. You have been a part of this. You have passed things. You have accepted blood money into this county by the pandemic and the government. Where's it going? What are you doing with it? Our churches are closed. We've endured religious persecution like never in America has ever seen before, and that I personally know of. Our kids are destroyed. Suicide is going up. Schools are closed, and education has absolutely failed in our state. Our votes are compromised. Forced shots that they have just addressed is nothing short of genocide at this time. You have the science, you know. You are participating in all of it. You have accepted, you have actually sworn an oath, like I have, to uphold our constitution and defend our rights against foreign and domestic invasion, and right now, we are witnessing domestic invasion. We elected you, and right now, we are in dangerous grounds. You have an opportunity to lead like no other county. I know you have been lenient, and you have opened our county before a lot of other counties in our state, so I implore you to keep going, to be bold, be courageous, keep leading our state. Open up. We have been given orders from headquarters. Linwood has charged us to go into our counties and find the corruption, and that's what we're doing. Sidney Powell is pleased to see us focus on the affidavits and the audits that we're producing. We're working hand in hand with these groups. We are here to uncover the corruption in our county. Mid-June, we demand the citizens of Placer County that you reject the Dominion contracts that you are prepared to renew.
It was odd enough that they were all upgraded shortly before March 2020.
We find that very suspicious, and we have numbers, and we're working with it, and you will all find out very shortly what those are. You are hereby put on notice to uphold and defend our rights. Affidavits will be served. You all will be encouraged to respond to us and let us know how you personally have upheld the Constitution, how you have defended our rights, and what you have done to protect us, and what you have done to stop this tyranny that we see.
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Reject the machines. Reject every form of forced inoculation and passports that are going to be presented in this county, and defend our rights for our children and our grandchildren. This is the last free country in the world, and you all have a part of it, so thank you for doing the right thing.
That's very good.
My name is Tina. I've only been attending the meetings here, I think this is my third time. I've been watching legislation across the state of California for the past three or four years now. Been spending lots of time at the Capitol, and I've watched how bills that get passed into law, say in 2015, that seemed fairly innocuous, get one-upped in 2016, and then one-upped again in 2017, and by the time we get to 2019, it's full-on communism. And so, I've got to hand out here these lovely people, and I was alarmed with AB 262 when that passed in 2019, that the, it was so broad and so vague that the county health officer could deem anything that they wanted. You could burn somebody's house down with the people in it, and you would be fully protected by law. I found that completely alarming. And so, I think the folks here, their concerns are valid. We see how government here in our country, and in counties close down in Southern California, have been just really, really aggressive in enforcing what they believe to be these mask mandates and vaccine mandates coming now. So I also would like this board to officially come out with some sort of statement about what AB 262 will look like in this county, and AB 389, which I only found about, I heard about recently, is also very alarming. I want to know how that will be implemented here. I want a statement from you folks that says you will not be using those laws to be pulling people out of their homes. And it sounds alarming, like nobody would ever do that, but we've seen across America and in Canada and other countries where that is happening. I want to make sure that doesn't happen here. And I think that Mr. Jason talked about having you guys issue something within the next 30 days. I think that's really reasonable. I want to know that our county boards are going to protect us, and that you will stand against tyranny as it comes to America, and especially Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lynette, and I would like to start by saying, if you watch what Orange County is doing, they're trying to implement a mobile vaccination unit, and it will be coming to a county near you. And I'd like to say that Placer County residents believe there's a planned systematic attempt to force residents to get the shot through AB 262, AB 389, and Patient Access and Inoperability Final Rule, CMS 9115F. We would like to understand how AB 262 that was passed on October 19, 2019, prior to COVID, is related to Placer County 2122 fiscal budget, which supports CMS 9115F. The CMS final rule requires hospitals, counties, and physicians to provide to the government patients medical information which is protected, including but not limited to patient current address, medical clinical notes, and most concerning, immunization records, and your religious affiliation. AB 262's language is vague but clear. It gives the local county health officers full discretion and power to issue to other governmental entities within the local health officer's jurisdiction to take any action the local health officer deems necessary to control the spread of the communicable disease using our taxpayers' money. Any action can include removing you or family members from your home if our corrupt California governor or our HHS local agency deems any person a threat to public health. AB 389 authorizes a fire protection district to enter into a written subcontract with a private ambulance service and authorizes a county to develop an emergency medical services program, and requires a county developing such a program to designate a local EMS agency that is required to be the county health department, an agency established and operated by the county. Article 11, Section 4 and 5 of the California Constitution provide that charter cities and counties may develop ordinances to govern local affairs, and further that ordinance passed by these entities take precedence over conflicting state laws as to local affairs, such as the county health officer's decisions surrounding the implementation of Cal HSC 120175.5. We, the people of Placer County, request you, the Placer County Board of Supervisors, pass an ordinance that explains how AB 262 will be implemented within this county. As a consequence of the foregoing, we respectfully request that this county approve, adopt, and ratify an ordinance that clearly interprets Cal HSC 120175.5 as follows. Section 120175.5 will never be interpreted to, one, permit the county health officer to remove citizens of Placer County from their residence under any circumstances unless that citizen's own primary care physician or a physician elected by the resident to be removed has determined that said resident is-
We'll have to wrap up your comments, please.
Will do. Is currently infected with a communicable disease that poses a significant threat to the community, and, two, that citizens must be afforded all due process rights under the law, irrespective of any emergency powers Placer County purports to be operating under. We have provided you a letter that we would like you to send to our assembly on our behalf, and we request that you do that immediately. Thank you.
We have two, we have some Zoom callers calling in, too, so we're gonna start with some of those currently.
Kathleen, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, I'm Kathleen. I'm from Placer County, both Roseville and Tahoe Vista. My concern is separate from the group that just spoke, so I just want to make that distinction. What I have is a concern that I'd like to bring to your attention about the Placer County Advisory Redistricting Commission. I know that the assignment has been given to the planning commission to do the reviews and recommendations to the board for decisions on new district boundaries for our new supervisors. When I looked at the planning commission, there are no women on the commission. Your advisory redistricting commission should not have the single viewpoint of excluding women and minority groups that are represented here in Placer County. As you can see, we all have different viewpoints, but I think as advisory to the Board of Supervisors, I definitely feel that you need to have a female perspective and a perspective that's not normally represented in many of your other commissions. So I would like to see the board rectify this, because you have time. There's no redistricting advisory meeting until June 24th, so I would like to see you make an appointment of a woman, a person of color, a minority representation, so that all of Placer County can be represented. And I've also sent this an email to all of you, and to the clerk of the board, and in addition, if needed, I will ask my friends from the Women, League of Women Voters to also let you know their opinions. I appreciate your, I appreciate you listening to my concern, but I also know that this is a concern of all of you, because as I look at you, I think, well, at least the board has a female perspective in it. So if you, if you could expand your advisory committee, which has no restrictions, all of it is by assignment or appointment, to include women and persons of color, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next Zoom caller, please.
Linda, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yeah, my name is Linda Musser. I live in Lincoln. I came from a small town where there were a lot of Jewish people, and they explained to me as a kid about all the tattoos on their arms and everything. Makes me sick. My stomach just here, there's AB 262 and AB 389. What's this world coming to? If you can put a stop to it, I'd really, really appreciate it. Right now, in my eyes, I see elected officials and politicians as nothing but scum sucking maggots, and I'm hoping you can change my opinion, because I know no one in politics. I just hear what I hear on TV. And, second, this Dominion thing, I didn't realize that Placer County used it, and I hope by God's name that you wake up and don't use it again. And that's really all I have to say. Put a stop to it now. This was a free country. I want my grandchildren to be free, my great-grandchildren to be free. Quit with all the overpowering of people. Let us live our lives. Thank you.
Chairman, no further public comments.
No further comments. Okay, is there anyone in the audience who hasn't spoken who would like to address the board this morning on something not on the agenda? Sure. State your name for the record.
My name is Michael. I'd like to let you know that the audio, there's no audio on the Zoom, so, on the live Zoom. So that's a violation of the Brown Act. So there's people that have been outside has contacted us to let us know that there's no audio.
If you want to take a break, we can test that. Everything on our side seems to be working correctly.
Those folks can hear us, right?
Yes. I mean, we were able to take public comment, which shows us that the system is working.
Further, just for the record, there was comments earlier about recording of the meetings and potential modifications, so our meetings are recorded, so you can watch them on video by meeting, by agenda item on a particular meeting, going back, how many years, Megan?
We started recording, I believe, in, like, I mean, it's at least 10, if not further.
Going back 10 years. In addition, there are minutes. All those are public record, and they are not altered, so.
And we have tested the Zoom system, and it is working properly.
Okay, but, but we know at least the last, the last meeting minutes were edited.
They were not edited. We did have a conversation about that. I spoke with Vivian about it. She had called in and felt that there was, that they'd been edited. We had a glitch in the system. We can't, we legally don't edit and can't edit. We reloaded it. It was exactly what, as it was.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vivian. I know I'm not, I dressed nicer today, so you wouldn't edit my video, and there is no glitch in the system. The video was actually edited twice. At least a minute of my public speaking was cut halfway in the middle at 1.47 seconds, and then the total complete end when I started talking about Whitney High School. When I called, it took, I probably talked to you, I talked to somebody else before you, and then I was told it was a glitch in the system. Sorry, I don't buy that. I know how to do stuff like that, so it doesn't work for me. And then, if it's a glitch in the system, then how in the world did, by Friday, the actual video, unedited, show up on the internet? So there's two copies. So I probably will be requesting both copies sent to me, and it is being reviewed to make sure that nothing else has been edited, and we are also going back through all the other videos to make sure that there's no edits in them. Apparently, it's against the law, the Browns Act. I didn't know that. I just thought maybe I said something inappropriate, and I was concerned because of that. So anyways, I want to support everybody that's talked today about AB 262. Freaks me out. I'm sure it does all you. Legislation is very, very difficult to read. I worked for the government for a very long time, I understand that. And I also have heard that there's plans on putting a 5G tower in Ofer, and the people are very, very upset about it.
Excuse me, that is on the agenda.
Yeah, I saw that.
So the time to talk about that is during that, during that item is at 1:00.
I have to go back to work, so I just wanted to give my-
Sure.
-support to the people.
Comments for that item will be made during that item at 1:00.
Okay. All right. Well, it's my turn to speak, so I just want to support that they don't have the 5G tower put in if they do not want it. And I think things like that really should be voted on by the people, not just by a small group of people. And I think moving forward, I think that's the direction we need to go, is before things are approved, we get to vote on it in person, voter ID, and we be notified in writing.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. If there's any further public comment, we will take it at the end of the meeting, and we will move on now with our first, excuse me. We'll start next with our board member reports and county exec reports, so are there any board members who wish to make a comment? Bonnie?
Thank you. Good morning. I'm going to share something about a bill, Assembly Concurrent Resolution 46 and Senate Concurrent Resolution 5, and these are bills that were introduced by Assembly members Kylie and Gallagher and co-authors, Assembly Member Megan Dolly and Senators Dolly and Nielsen. I want to support, and I support, ACR 46 and SCR 5, which simply declares that the state of emergency proclaimed by Governor Gavin Newsom on March 4, 2020, is in an end, and that the emergency powers granted to the governor as a result of that proclamation are terminated. As, as we all know, the blueprint was put in place as a means to address the state of emergency, and by terminating the blueprint, he is conceding that there is no longer a need to address the emergency. The governor unfortunately appears to be unwilling to relent his emergency powers authority by terminating the state of emergency, and it will take the action of the legislature to help our residents resume life at their discretion. State of emergency requires conditions of disaster or extreme peril to continue. So let me share a few facts about why we no longer have conditions of disaster or extreme peril. Here are a few facts. The daily COVID-19 infection rate is one out of 25,000 people nationally, and one out of 50,000 people in California. The daily death rate is one out of 770,000 people- The daily death rate is one out of 770,000 people nationally and one out of every 1.429 million in California. Forty-four percent of Californians are fully vaccinated and considerably more have natural immunity. In Placer County, the vaccination rate is similar. And for those who are 65 and older, who are at most risk, we have about an 80% vaccination rate. I have personally seen the strain on the government mandated shutdowns that has taken on our community and our schools and our businesses. And it is time for the governor to end the state of emergency. And so I want to encourage our Board to support this legislation at a further action item. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Cindy?
My update is on a meeting that we held yesterday. Todd Leah pulled Karen Schwab, Supervisor Holmes, and myself met with the City Council of Colfax to talk about a contract with Placer County for fire protection services. This is the second workshop we've attended with the City of Colfax. I think we were there approximately two hours answering questions and moving that forward. So it'll be coming back to the Board of Supervisors at our next meeting to take action. The City Council will meet the following day to take action on the contract. But I want to thank staff for incredible amount of work that is taken to move this forward. So I wanted to let the rest of you know about that. And then also today is a bit of a landmark day for the county of Placer. We are proud of one of our remarkable Placer County residents who is today completing another trip around the solar orbit. And so tomorrow, he starts his 70th orbit around the sun. And of course, he's doing this from Spaceship Earth. And of course, I'm speaking of Placer County's own Robert Weigand. From his childhood on a beef and dairy cattle ranch to a successful businessman to his present day's service, Robert has been making positive difference in Placer County for many, many years. Over half of his life, he has served Placer County residents as a volunteer and public official. And I won't use the term the caller had about us, but I will say that you've been an incredible leader of our community. I first met Robert in, I believe, 1989, which is 32 years ago, Robert, when he served on the Business and Industrial Development Commission, later revised to be the Economic Development Commission. And then, so you served on that from 1982 to 1990. And then on the Placer County Planning Commission from 1990 to 1993. And then became a Placer County Supervisor for District 2 in 1994 through today. And the thing I want to say most, other than wow, that's a young Robert. You are such a fair and level-headed and humble, 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 humble person, leader. You're innovative, you're considerate, you're approachable. From wherever position people come to talk to you, you are so approachable in your decision-making process and always looking to the future of our county with a lot of forethought. I heard that was a celebration just a couple of decades ago, that the fire department had to be called in for the number of candles then. Because of the red flag warnings and high fire danger this year, we weren't able to replicate that event today. But anyway, and all joking aside, Robert, I think there's so many landmark decisions you've made and policies that you've pushed forward for our county. But I was, I'm so impressed with the PCCP and 20 years of effort and legacy and vision that took going to Congress, going to Washington, going above and beyond to represent this county and protect our open spaces and our agricultural future, as well as focusing development in the Sunset Industrial Area for that job growth and innovation. And those two things combined are really leading the way for Placer County and such a legacy. And we did want to have a little fun because we take a lot of heat up here, but it's great to celebrate a lot of service and a 70th trip around the sun. So I was asked to make a couple remarks, but I think there's others who want to make remarks on this auspicious occasion.
Thank you, Cindy. I think. Who is that guy? Who was that guy? Any other Board Member comments?
Well, Supervisor Weigand, I welcome you to the septuagenarian decade that I will share with you now. I was the only guy here for a while. But, you know, I'm the second longest, you're the longest. I'll never meet your goal of many years. Maybe, but I doubt it. Anyhow, it's been a pleasure working with you. As Supervisor Gustafson said, I can't add anything to that. You have been very innovative and very forward-thinking, visionary. And I've been pleased to be able to be part of that. So congratulations on your 70th tomorrow. I know you're not there yet.
He's starting it tomorrow.
Yeah, starting it tomorrow. Yeah, it's just coming to an end. The septuagenarian to the septuagenarian. So congratulations and happy birthday.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yes, Robert, I just want to add that my term so far has been short, but I am enjoying very much working with you as Chair, as well as with the rest of my Board Members. Congratulations and happy birthday tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I will say happy birthday as well. And the one thing I would like to add is I appreciate your calm leadership and your sense of humor in the midst of challenging times. Thank you. And I will say too, that I have learned so much from you because you have such a great wealth of history and you remember things really well, which is not what I'm really good at. But you bring a sense of history and understanding to issues and challenges. And I really, really appreciate the perspective that you have given this Board over the last several years that I've served on it. So happy birthday. Enjoy your celebration. And I know it won't be just one day, but hopefully you'll celebrate the month of June and enjoy this milestone.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for all of that, I think. One of the best things that happened to me was my folks decided to be crazy and move up here from Southern California when I was turning 10. So I've been here now for 60 years. And it's been a great ride and a great place to provide, give back and public service with a lot of great folks. So thank you. I think I don't recognize that guy anymore, but thank you. Under my Board Report, I just want to, I want to make a couple of comments for the public as it relates to the testimony we've received today largely about COVID and the county's position. I encourage all of you to get involved and actually participate in this process. If you actually look at our Board hearings that are on video and/or the minutes or whatever medium you choose, you'd learn that this Board has, I think we sent four or five letters under Bonnie's leadership as Chair, to the governor articulating where we departed with him philosophically as it related to the management of COVID. That culminated with a resolution to the same effect. I'm sure that our position hasn't changed. We've always been thirsty for local control over the health emergency and have fought for that. And I think that will continue as we move forward. So I would encourage people to actually study that. And then I'd like Megan to actually explain, there was a comment personally after all these years, and I think all of us, I'm sure all of us, take transparency here at Placer County extremely seriously. When I started so long ago, we were not recorded and/or on TV. So there's much greater transparency now and the technology has changed and we've tried to stay consistent with that. So I'd like Megan to respond to the one comment that was made about a potential modification.
So the issue that occurred where, you know, we load our video into YouTube. So it was not actually on the Placer County side, but when we loaded it into YouTube, there was a glitch at that point. We can't speak to that because it wasn't our technology that failed. That's why we were able to reload the video and have no missing pieces to it is because our video is the correct and true video that it always was and it was on the YouTube side that there was an issue.
Thanks, Megan. So with that, Todd, do you have any reports?
Just two. I just want one, happy birthday. It's been well stated. I think the second one, just so you're aware, you know, we've been talking about coming back to normalcy here in the county and how do we bring back, most of our services are available to all our residents. And I think some way even more appropriate in terms of online, they can do it in person, things that we even have enhanced, I think, since this COVID outbreak. Having said that, we're still under guidance around OSHA and Cal OSHA. And so I just received a message that there's an emergency meeting they have tomorrow. So I'll be providing you all with an update. This is a guidance we have to continually monitor for not only the safety of our employees and the guidance that is provided at the state, but also for residents coming and conducting business with us. So I just share that with you because in the same breath as we try and bring things on, we need to do it safely and appropriately. And we have guidance from Cal OSHA that provides that assistance to us. And so we've been trying to meet those needs as much as possible. So more to come, but I did want to share that with you because it is, we weren't thinking we were going to get any new guidance from OSHA. And most honestly, within the last 20 minutes, it sounds like they're having an emergency meeting tomorrow. So more to come.
Yeah, appreciate that. And I'll just finish with, under the Brown Act, actually, Board Members are constrained to only speak with one other Board Member, less than a majority, as it relates to an item that might be emerging or something that is on our agenda. But for the public, there has been communication as it relates to Cal OSHA requirements, to the Board emails, so forth. And maybe my personal concern would be that there's clarity about the Cal OSHA regulation. There has not been clarity as it relates to a lot of the governor's orders. There's been contradictions internally. I've mentioned that the Board has always expressed a desire to have local authority as related to the emergency. So I think the Board would well be positioned to stay up to beat on that information and potentially take some action if it's necessary. And we will want to reach out to the community and make sure the public knows exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. So thank you. With that, I have to hurry along at my age, so we'll take up our 915 timed item, which is Public Works modification to the transfer station tipping fees. And Brandon's going to, Brandon is going to take that up, of course.
Good morning, Chair Weigand and Members of the Board. My name is Brandon Thurber and I'm a Senior Civil Engineer with the Placer County Department of Public Works Environmental Engineering Division. This morning, I will request that your Board consider two actions related to the solid waste, excuse me, related to the garbage collection fees in franchise areas 1 and 4, which includes unincorporated Placer County west of Colfax, including Forest Hill Divide and Iowa Hill Divide. As a little background, Recology has provided garbage collection services for the county since 1976. In April of 2013, the county entered into a new agreement with Recology for collection of solid waste in franchise areas 1 and 4. Garbage collection fees consist of three components. One is the service fee. This is the fee charged by Recology for collecting and transporting garbage to the Western Placer Waste Management Authority, or WATMA, Material Recovery Facility, or MRF, for processing. Per the agreement, the COLA on the service portion of the garbage collection fee is calculated every two years and is subject to adjustment July 1, 2021. The current proposed COLA for fiscal year 1920 and 2021 on the service component of the garbage collection fee is 1.5%. Second is the disposal fee. This is a pass-through cost for the tipping fee at WATMA charged to Recology for dumping garbage at the MRF for processing and of recyclables and disposal of the residue. In March of 2021, WATMA approved an increase in tipping fees to address the impacts of new organics recycling legislation to be effective July 1, 2021, which results in a municipal solid waste tipping fee increase from $73 to $88 per ton and a construction and demolition debris increase from $51 to $88 per ton. The increase in tipping fee results in an increase of the disposal component of garbage collection fee that may vary by the level of service. And third is the service fee. This is the portion of the fee that funds the county's solid waste management program, outreach and education programs, and oversight of garbage collection services, as well as maintenance of the county's closed landfills. There's no proposed increase to this fee as it is adequate for these programs. The proposed fees are shown in the attachment to the memo titled Proposed Rate Increases for 2021 and 2022. A few examples are a 96-gallon toter, which is the most common residential service, will increase by $2.57 from $31.62 to $34.19 per month. Another example is the parcel fee charged to property owners in the Forest Hill area will increase by $2.27 from $18.79 to $21.06 per month. And then last, a three-yard commercial bin will increase by $18.44 from $262.88 to $281.32 per month. All owners of developed properties of Forest, excuse me, all owners in the Forest Hill fee area of franchise area 4 have free use of the Forest Hill Transfer Station and are billed a basic fee to pay for operation and maintenance of the transfer station. Those property owners were mailed notice of the fee increase 45 days in advance of this public hearing in compliance with Prop 218. Staff would like to make note that the increases to the garbage collection fees are predominantly due to external cost drivers, such as the WATMA tipping fee increase driven by state regulations, along with the COLA increase to the Recology agreement, and that the county is not increasing their portion of the garbage collection fees. So to conclude, staff is requesting that your Board take the following actions. First, conduct a public hearing to consider all protests and tabulate ballots on the proposed garbage collection fee adjustment in the Forest Hill area of franchise area 4. And second, approve and authorize the Chair to execute the Eighth Agreement to the Solid Waste Handling Services Agreement with Recology, Auburn, Placer, to incorporate increased garbage collection fees charged to the public. And that will complete my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Brandon. Any questions from Board Members? Bonnie?
No questions, but just sort of an FYI for our Board. So Robert and I sit on the WATMA Board, Western Placer Waste Management Authority Board, and we had a robust discussion about having to increase the tipping fees, the disposal fees at the dump or at the authority because of the new legislation that addresses organics recycling, which increases a huge new mandate on our landfill. And because of that, in order for us to comply with that, thus the reason we've had to increase that disposal fee. So I just wanted to let you all know that we, and we also chose not to have the higher fee. We sort of landed less than what staff originally had suggested because we want to continue to do our best to keep fees as low as we can, but still having to meet the mandates passed by the state.
Thanks, Bonnie. See no other comments or questions from Board Members? This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public for comment.
Chairman, I see no public comment.
So I'll close the public hearing and we will tabulate the ballot.
Chairman, on this item, there were only 87 protests received, which is not a majority.
Okay, thanks. So with that, what is the desire of the Board?
I'll move approval to move this forward. But I did want to report real quickly before I make that motion that we did also at our Town Hall for Forest Hill on Monday night raise this issue. Thank you for being up late on Monday night to discuss this. And there really wasn't any feedback from the Forest Hill community in that meeting either. So with that, I'll make a motion. Approve it.
Motion, Gustafson, Second, Jones. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion, Gustafson, second. Jones, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now take up our nine twenty-five timed item, which is also Public Works modification tipping fees, processing fees, garbage collection fees, et cetera. Brandon?
Well, hello again. My name is Brandon Thurber, Senior Civil Engineer with Placer County Department of Public Works Environmental Engineering Division. This morning, I am here to request that your board consider two actions related to garbage collection fees and recycling fees in franchise areas two and three, which consist of areas east of the city of Colfax to the Nevada state line. As a little background, in 2015, the county entered into agreement with Eastern Regional Landfill, Inc., or ERL, Inc., and Tahoe Truckee Disposal, or TTD, for the collection, transportation, processing, recycling, and disposal of solid waste. Under this agreement, garbage is transported by TTD to the Eastern Regional Material Recovery Facility, or MRF, where the recyclable material is removed by ERL, Inc. Under the agreement with ERL, Inc., they are entitled to a cost of living adjustment, or COLA, on an annual basis to the processing fees, which are primarily related to changes in the California minimum wage. In addition, ERL makes monthly license payments to the county for use of the MRF, which is also subject to the same COLA as the processing fee. The current proposed COLA calculation for ERL, Inc. is an increase of 4%. This, in addition to the increased maintenance cost and the county, excuse me, maintenance cost to the county at the MRF and closed landfills, result in the need to increase the tipping fees at the Eastern Regional MRF from $85.50 to $89 per ton effective July 1, 2021, as shown in the attached Proposed ERL MRF Tipping Fees Table. The increased tipping fee will be paid by TTD as they bring the garbage to the MRF from their collection routes, and these increases are typically passed through to the customers in franchise areas two and three for their garbage collection services. There are three components to the garbage collection fees. Again, one is the service fee. This is the fee charged by TTD for collecting and transporting garbage to the ERL MRF for processing. Per the agreement, the COLA for the service portion of the garbage collection fee is calculated every two years and is subject for adjustment on July 1 of 2021. The current increase is 2.86% and will not be subject for adjustment until July 1, 2023. Two is the disposal fee. This is a pass-through cost of the tipping fee paid by TTD as discussed above. The fees, which in turn result in an increase to the component of the garbage collection fees and varies by level of service. And third is the special fee. This is, again, the portion of the fee that funds the county's solid waste, solid waste management program, which includes monitoring maintenance of closed landfill sites and many outreach and educational programs and oversight of the garbage collection services. There is no proposed increase to this fee. The proposed garbage collection fees are shown in the attached memo titled Proposed Rate Increases for 2021 through 2022. A few examples are, a single can service will increase in franchise area three by 64 cents from 2044 to 2108 per month. And additionally, another example, a three-yard commercial service will increase in franchise area three by $7.77 from 22890 to 23667 per month. All properties in franchise area three where garbage collection is mandatory were mailed a postcard noticing the proposed garbage collection fee increase and the public hearing. This notice was mailed 45 days prior to the hearing in compliance with Prop 218. In addition to the garbage collection service as discussed above, your board has approved an agreement with Clean Tahoe, a nonprofit corporation, in the amount of $150,000 for enhanced litter and garbage abatement services in the North Lake Tahoe region funded through the transient occupant tax. That is unrelated to this increase, but staff just wanted to make note of that. So this will, at this time, I would like to conclude by requesting your board take actions on the following items. First, conduct a public hearing to consider all protests and tabulate ballots proposed by the garbage collection fee adjustment in franchise area three, which includes unincorporated Placer County from Donner Lake to the Nevada state line. And second, approve and authorize the chair to execute the eighth amendment to the Solid Waste Handling Services Agreement with Placer County Eastern Regional Landfill, Inc. and Tahoe Truckee Disposal, Inc., to modify the Tahoe Truckee Disposal, Inc. garbage collection fees in franchise areas two and three, and tipping fees collected at the Eastern Regional Material Recovery Facility and processing fees to Placer County Eastern Regional Landfill, Inc. This completes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Megan. Any questions by board members? See none. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
I just have one question. Since this is state legislation that's causing the increase in fees, county, it seems like in two areas. I've never heard of this, so until today. Is that going to eventually affect everyone in the county and all the different districts of the utilities? Do you expect that?
Essentially, yes. But Kevin, do you want to address that? Give me a little bit more detail as it relates to the specificity regarding what Bonnie had referred to?
Just wondering.
So Kevin, just for the record, is also one of our staff members out at the Western Placer Landfill Authority and generally has a close purview of our county wastewater or waste management issues countywide and wastewater, too.
Yeah, so SB 1383 is a mandatory organics recycling mandate that was passed by the state. The regs were adopted by CalRecycle at the end of last year, and it will impact essentially every resident and every business in the entire county. The two areas that the action is being taken on today essentially cover, it's actually four franchise areas, but it covers the entire county. And it will apply to cities as well. It's a, it's a big, a big new mandate, and there is significant cost in order to comply with that mandate.
Thanks, Kevin. Any other comments from the public? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
So Jacqueline, again. So why, as a county, are we required to comply with this mandate that, like, creates additional stress on businesses, on the recycling plant, on, you know, additional fees in a time when people are struggling anyway? So, I mean, is, what is the requirement that our county comply with that mandate?
State mandates are large and almost limitless and varied, but maybe county council could get a brief, brief description legally as to the platform upon which we exist.
Yes. So the county is political subdivision of the state. The county is given the powers and authorities by the state. The charter also provides the county with its, basically its, its powers. But certain state mandates are under the purview of the state and are required to be imposed on every county, every city, regardless of whether they're a charter or not. This happens to be one of them. We can't go against it. Well, we could, but it wouldn't go well for us. So we have to comply with certain laws. This is one of them, and this is why we're bringing forward these particular increases.
Thanks.
Could I ask you to clarify something here? And so when you say it would not go well for us, what that would mean would be that the county or the landfill could be fined thousands and thousands of dollars
That's correct.
if we did not comply. And so therefore, those fines would then be passed on to our residents. So that's one of the reasons why it would not go well, is the state would turn around and then fine the county or the jurisdiction for not complying.
Hi, my name is Tim Heister. We have a couple of lots up at Cedar Flat, and we have a little confusing situation. And it's more tactical than all the strategic county versus state thing. We have an empty lot that we got a notice that our fees would start, and then we have our house lot where we, of course, will get the garbage collected. So we're confused by why we're getting charged for an empty lot. And so I would ask you to consider that, the engineers and everybody else, about some of that confusion.
Thank you. Cindy?
I just wanted to see if we could get the address of that vacant lot so that we can check on that, because I don't believe you should be...
I haven't.
Okay. What, would you, because the public records, yeah.
Perhaps the gentleman should give that to Kevin Bell?
Yeah. Yeah, you don't have to tell us your address. You don't have to. I'm sorry.
You don't have to tell us. If you could just submit it.
The fellow who just testified?
Yeah, he's standing up, and he will take it and look into that for you.
We'll talk offline with that. We've already spoken to Janine about, there are all these little situations about lots and houses and where's the safest place to collect the garbage and all that. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to testify?
Chairman, I see no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll tabulate the ballots?
We received 411 protests, which was not a majority.
Thank you. So...
Move approval. I'll second.
Motion, Gustafson, second. Gore, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll now take up our nine thirty-five timed item, which is a commendation for Brad Crockett's Roseville High School Computer Science students, taken by Supervisor Gore. Bonnie?
Thank you. Well, good morning. And this is one of those times when we, as government, get to recognize some really good things that happen in our community. So we have some students from a computer science class from Roseville High School who did a wonderful job. So actually, there's a couple of you here in the audience, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read the proclamation. And then we do have, I believe, Mr. Crockett online, as well as maybe a couple of other students who are watching. And I wanted to read this and just share with our community what you all did as a class to support residents in our community. So this is a commendation recognizing Mr. Crockett's Computer Science Class at Roseville High School on its completion of Placer Connect. Whereas the Transition Age Youth Housing Collaborative Roommate App Work Group was established on January 28, 2021, to promote a solution to the county's affordable housing and youth homelessness crisis, focusing on young people ages 18 to 24. And whereas Mr. Crockett's students volunteered to join the team and provide their high-quality computer science knowledge and 21st century professional and leadership skills to work in partnership with the Transition Age Youth Housing Collaborative to develop Placer Connect, a roommate-sharing app for transition-aged youth. And whereas, since the project began, Mr. Crockett's class and the work group have sought to ensure that all transition-aged youth have greater opportunities to obtain, afford, and sustain permanent housing by creating a youth-designed online platform that provides transition-aged youth a safe place to find fellow transition-aged youth roommates in Placer County. And whereas, although a project of this magnitude would typically take years to complete, the work group's efforts moved the app from prototype to active within three months. That's some accomplishment. Good job. Understanding the importance of feedback from youth with lived experience, the work group convened multiple meetings with transition-aged youth in the community to gain their insight. And whereas Mr. Crockett's students promoted wraparound support by creating a resource section on the app, where users can find a list of agencies to provide different housing types in Placer County, from shelters and transitional housing to permanent housing, as well as financial support through the Transition Age Youth Housing Collaborative Assistance Funds. The app also includes links to 211 to help connect youth to a wide variety of resources they might need. And whereas the dedication, commitment, and professionalism of Mr. Crockett's Computer Science Class at Roseville High has been crucial in helping to fight homelessness among transition-aged youth. With their successful efforts to create this app, the students have helped to ensure that transition-aged youth will have a better chance at obtaining permanent housing by providing a safe and easy way to connect with other youth who are facing the same housing issues. So now, therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by this Board of Supervisors today on June 8, 2021, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County. And we acknowledge your service to the youth in our community. So, great job. This is such a wonderful example of not only our schools, but our young people stepping up to support our community. Just, I want to give you a round of applause. So I'm going to come on down, and I've got some certificates of recognition for you.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Perhaps you, we're going to give you the commendation, but maybe we should approve and vote on it first, because there could be a split vote.
All right. So I'm going to move approval of the resolution, please.
Motion, Gore, second. Gustafson, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Oppose? Unanimous.
All right, terrific. So I have this commendation, and then I'm going to also, while I'm here, name the students. So right here with us, so we have, I believe we have Shane Meadows-Yah. Shane, hello. And I'm guessing your band, is it Son?
Sony.
Sony. And then we also, the other students, Alexis Hendrickson, and Alyssa Javier, and Noah Wen. And then we have Mr. Crockett on the line as well. And I, hopefully, I have everyone, but I have certificates for each of you and the commendation. Anyone want to make any comments before I come down and hand you this certificate? Yes, please.
Just very quickly, hi. I'm Christina Nicholson. I'm the Director of Whole Person Learning and the Coordinator of the Transition Age Youth Housing Collaborative. And so I, on behalf of that TEA, HC, which now has a logo, yeah, not only a logo, but a roommate app, we would like to thank all of you for your willingness to support and acknowledge positive youth development projects like this one that honor and highlight the exceptional skills, knowledge, and ability of the youth and young adults in your communities. And thank you all so much for all that you do on a daily basis.
Thank you. So the commendation here, we stand as two of you, and we're going to turn around. And then I have a certificate of recognition for each of you as well. But here, we'll stand together.
Thank you very much.
I'll let Christine do it. Got it?
Thank you.
So well deserved.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'll let you share this with your fellow students. Appreciate your hard work.
And thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Good job.
You made our day. Thank you.
Soon enough, you can be up here.
Thanks, Bonnie. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
We'll now take up our nine forty-five timed item, which is an annual report from the Placer County Youth Commission.
Good morning, Chair Weigant, supervisors. Joe Arseneth here today, your Assistant Director of the Public Health Division. I'm requesting that you receive an annual report from the Placer County Youth Commission. On May 12, 2009, the Placer County Youth Commission was established by unanimous vote of Resolution 2009-116. The resolution requires an annual report be presented to the Board of Supervisors at the first board meeting in the month of June. With me today are Amy Scraber and Alex Ride, the co-advisors for the Placer County Youth Commission, as well as a few Youth Commission members who will be presenting the year in review. And with that, I'd like to pass the baton to the Youth Commissioners.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Akshay Nagaraja, and with me I have Julia Moss and Eily Redd. We are all members of the Placer County Youth Commission, and today we want to present to you the 2020 to 2021 end-of-year report. Next slide, please. These are the pictures of the commissioners of the Placer County Youth Commission for this year. Our commissioners represent all five districts of Placer County. Next slide, please. Now, the Placer County Youth Commission seeks to advise, integrate, prepare, promote, and enhance. Thus, we want to make the lives of youth in Placer County better in any way we can. Next slide, please. Our vision statement is to create change and leave a lasting impact for all youth in Placer County. Our mission statement is to enable youth in Placer County to create long and lasting change in the community through positive actions and engagement. Next slide, please. Now, my fellow Commissioner Julia Moss will present... Now, my fellow Commissioner Julia Moss will present about the youth trainings we received this year.
Hello. This year, we had the pleasure of having five youth trainings. The first one was the tobacco industry's marketing strategies via social media by a Lucha Tobacco Program Coordinator. This provided insight into the realities of how youth start vaping and what we can do as the commission to combat that. The next youth training we were able to have was by a mental health specialist at Placer Union High School District, which gave us advice and knowledge to improve our mental health advocacy. The third training we had was by an injury prevention specialist from What Do You Consider Lethal?, on the dangers of distracted driving such as phones, people, and music. Then we had a fellow youth that actually used to be on the PCYC educate us on the Asian Youth Leadership Association. She created the program that has spread to three states so far, and it focuses on Asian culture discrimination and community projects that they do. Lastly, we had a representative from Mothers Against Drunk Driving share stories and statistics to educate us on the harsh realities of drunk driving in our community. Next slide, please. This year, we came up with our two subcommittees and their projects by assessing the needs for the community, identifying the largest problems that we thought we could make a change for, and then planning the outreach and implementing those projects. The two issues we chose to focus on this year were vaping and mental health, due to the overwhelming number of students that face these issues. Next slide, please. For the vaping subcommittee, we realized how social media made vaping seem fun and cool instead of the health hazard that it is. Using that knowledge, we created and posted anti-vaping posts that were informational to break the glorification pattern that we see on Instagram. We also created educational posters targeting youth outside of social media and wrote cases to implement procedures and protocols to prevent vaping that we presented at school districts. We also reached out to local decision-makers through educational emails, and some even requested meetings with us. And for the next few slides, I will pass it to Eily Ride. The main goal for the mental health subcommittee was to raise awareness of the mental health issues that teens are facing today. To do this, we created a PSA that followed four real people's experiences. We focused on OCD, anxiety, depression, and anorexia. And in the PSA, we had a, four teenagers sit down at a desk writing letters to their past selves with flashbacks to the times they were facing this mental health issue and then to the future when they have overcome it. We also created Instagram posts specifically targeting specific mental health issues, like the one on the screen, National Stress Awareness Day, as well as created information cards for our virtual 5K we did. Next slide, please. Recently, we just had our virtual 5K, which was the Free Your Mind, Free the Air Fun Run, where we had an art contest where the winner of the art contest artwork was actually put onto our T-shirts that we gave to the participants. We had fifty-four participants and a few even shouted us out on social media. Of course, we did it virtual, you know, to stay COVID-friendly. And our main goal for this was just to promote a healthy mind and a healthy body and raise awareness of the dangers of vaping and mental health. Next slide, please. Earlier this year, several of our youth were able to go to the Friday Night Live Youth Leadership Summit, where we received trainings on advocacy through social media, the different roles of our leadership, the leadership roles that our youth will have within a subcommittee, and then how to work with our local leaders. We were then able to take this back to PCYC and teach them about the different skills we learned, which helped us to know what kind of social media posts to create and how we can reach out to our local leaders to better serve our community. Next slide, please. Thank you, and are there any questions?
Bonnie?
Thank you so much for the presentation. What a great job. And I just love your effort of trying to promote awareness about the dangers of vaping and the mental health issues. I wanted to share something that I did this last weekend on Friday. I had the opportunity to go to Adelante High School, and they had a project, an art project that the high school district supported along with a foundation called Hope Through Art. And they spent a week doing a mural. Ten students were learning how to paint, and they did a mural that actually promoted, or actually an anti-vaping message. So here is a copy of the T-shirt that they had. Be healthy, stay strong, and live vape-free. So I wanted to share that with you, the students who have been on this advisory committee, because it's a great message and it's great to see that other youth throughout our county are focusing on the same message. So I just want to continue to encourage you to keep doing that. It's terrific to see are you throughout the county trying to promote healthy messages, which are so important.
Thanks. Jim?
Yes, thank you for this presentation, Supervisor Weigant, and appreciate the large print in the. You know, this is, I think, the eleventh year of the Youth Commission, and every year you exceed my expectations so much. And particularly this year with what you had to go through, not being able to gather, but doing everything online, I really, really am impressed with the quality of the work you do and the very substantial issues that you bring forth to educate young people to do the right thing as they move forward in life. Again, I just am so proud of all of you, and please send my congratulations to all your members. Thank you.
Any other comments from questions, board members? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Thank you. Well, thank you all. Congratulations on, again, another year of fine work. We really appreciate it. It's great to hear back from you. We'll now take up our ten o'clock timed item, which is a consideration of the fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two budget. Daniel?
Good morning, Chair Weigant, members of the board. Daniel Chatney with the County Executive Office. I'm pleased to be here today to present to you the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two recommended budget. I'd first like to offer my appreciation to department and CEO office staff for their roles in constructing this recommended budget. And I want to specifically thank the four members of the CEO's budget team, Daniel Vick, Adam Wade, Barbara McAllister, and Chad Finstermacher, for, again, exemplifying their dedication adhering to county budget and fiscal policies and the deadlines to bring this budget forward to you today. At the conclusion of today's presentation and the public hearing, we'll be asking the board to take three different actions. The first will be to pass a motion of intent to adopt the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two recommended budget, including the recommended budgets for county operating funds in a total amount of one billion, twenty-four million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. Also, recommended budgets for county proprietary funds in a total amount of one hundred and thirty-four million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one. Also, will be a motion of intent to adopt the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two recommended budgets for lighting districts, lighting and landscape districts, benefit assessment districts, county service areas zones, permanent road divisions, and sewer maintenance districts governed by the Board of Supervisors in an amount of thirty-four million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty. Finally, we'll be introducing an ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two uncodified allocation of positions to departments and waive oral reading. To promote fiscal transparency, I just wanted to touch a little bit on the development process that got us to this point today. And to just make a mention that all but two of these items on this calendar are events that are open to the public and handled in a public meeting forum. So this budget development cycle really is a year-round effort. After budget adoption and in late summer and early fall, we begin planning for the next budget development cycle, which generally kicks off, and in this case kicked off, on November tenth in two thousand and twenty with a pre-budget workshop with the Board of Supervisors. We follow that with our pre-budget rollout meetings to, with our departments and a countywide budget kickoff in January. And then in March, on March ninth of this year, we brought to the board a mid-year fiscal update, which serves as much to inform the board and the public about our current fiscal year status, but as well starts to establish our projections for the year-end and then obviously going into the new fiscal year's fund balances and budget status as well. The departments were present to present to you on April sixth their budget presentations, including accomplishments and items that they were looking forward to, major initiatives coming up. We spend the month of May finalizing this recommended budget and present to you today the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. If all goes well today, we'll be back before you on June twenty-second in two weeks with the final budget adoption. Once again, this recommended budget incorporates efforts that align with the county's strategic priorities. These efforts are detailed in the staff memo that accompanies this presentation. But here's the list of the recently updated eight critical success factors. Strategic relationships and community engagement, diversity of achievable housing throughout the county, public-serving infrastructure and amenities, outcome-focused economic development strategies, prudent and comprehensive financial planning, fiscally sustainable public safety services, innovated, integrated county services, and balanced land use planning and environmental stewardship. Some of the key components of this year's recommended budget, you know, we continue to balance continued improvement with fiscal sustainability. This new year operating expense budget is balanced with new year revenue. We have continued upward growth in countywide assessed valuation. This budget reflects a four-and-a-half percent property tax increase for unincorporated Placer County, as well as modest sales tax-driven revenue increases. We are balancing this against increased costs for countywide salaries, CalPERS retirement costs, and healthcare, and funding the status of our other post-employment benefits, also known as retiree healthcare. At this point, one year ago, we were discussing potential revenue losses due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Sales taxes in specific industries like travel and tourism and restaurants did decline in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, but the online pool based on internet sales tax had a forty-six-point-one percent increase in quarter four of two thousand and twenty and compared to quarter four of two thousand and nineteen. And increases in some categories like home improvement stabilized our sales tax revenue. Unfortunately, we did see a spike in unemployment. Unemployment peaked last year at thirteen-point-three percent in April of two thousand and twenty. And it has improved to five, five-point-five percent as of March of this year compared to a statewide average of eight-point-three percent.
And Daniel, hate to interrupt, but do you know what our unemployment was before COVID hit us? I know it was very good, but I don't.
We, yeah, in fact, we were at our lowest percentage just about six months before. I think we were around two-point-six percent, two-and-a-half percent.
Thank you.
And just a reminder that the Placer Shares Program sponsored by your board distributed nearly fifteen million dollars of cares, federal cares funds, to small businesses and nonprofits in the community through the COVID-19 pandemic. With that, we'll move into our discussion of the actual recommended budget. So we present to you a status quo budget with adjustments to address increased workload and service demand in our Health and Human Services Department, as well as in our Community Development Resource Agency. And this table reflects our major operating funds and the change year-over-year from our adopted budget of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. And starting at the top, general fund has a six-point-two million dollar increase overall from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. It represents a one-point-seven percent increase overall. Four-point-one million of that increase is in salaries and benefits, which partially is reflected in the increased allocations in our Community Development Resource Agency. We had a thirteen-point-five million dollar increase in transfers to other funds, five-and-a-half million of that increase to public safety, two-point-three million in addition to Health and Human Services, and another five-point-five million to the capital fund. All of these increases are offset by a ten-point-five million dollar decrease to reserve contributions compared to last year. In our public safety fund, we see a seven-point-two million dollar increase overall, or a three-point-four percent increase, six-point-four million dollar increase in salaries and benefits. And this is also partially reflected by the addition of four correctional positions added to the Sheriff's Department in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one for the jail based competency training program. Our HHS fund, Health and Human Services Special Revenue Fund, has a twelve-point-eight million dollar increase for five-point-six percent over the prior year, a five-million-dollar increase in salaries and benefits. And this is also partially reflected by the addition of thirteen positions, thirteen-position increase between the adopted budget last year and the current recommended budget today, a four-point-one million dollar increase in services and supplies, and another one-point-five million dollar increase in countywide charges from the cost plan. We did separate out operating fund budgets from our capital fund budgets this year for transparency for the board and the public. And our operating budget at this point in the recommended is eight-hundred-and-ninety-one million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two. Collectively, our capital funds budgets in the Capital Projects Fund, as well as Public Ways and Facilities, total one hundred and thirty-two million, five hundred and eight, one hundred and thirty-six. So for a total county budget recommended of one billion, twenty-four million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and eight, which represents a total four-point-four million dollar increase over the prior year. At the bottom of the, the second table on there shows the proprietary funds and a recommended budget of one hundred and thirty-four million, which is a one-point-two percent decrease from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one's adopted budget, and our special districts and CSAs, which has a six-point-seven million dollar reduction, or sixteen-point-three percent from the prior year's adopted budget of forty-one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. The things that drive those two budgets down are generally capital projects and then just the size of those and the projects that those districts need to, to address each fiscal year. So our overall recommended budget revenue source, revenue and financing sources, intergovernmental revenue remains the county's largest source of revenue at three hundred and twenty-seven million, representing thirty-two percent of our overall revenue and financing sources. Local taxes, which includes property taxes, at two hundred and seventy-two million dollars is twenty-seven percent of all financing sources. On the expenditure side, salaries and benefits remain the county's largest cost category at thirty-seven percent of the overall expenditures. In fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, salaries and benefits were three hundred and sixty-eight-point-one million dollars. So this represents a sixteen million dollar growth year-over-year, or four-point-three percent. I just want to mention, four-and-a-half million of that sixteen million dollar growth is the additional twenty-four allocations, personnel allocations from adopted budget two thousand and twenty-one to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Plus, our pension increases, general wage increases, step and merit increases make up the rest of the twelve million dollar increase. I do want to point out again that our transfers of two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six are essentially double counted in our budget here. So it represents as an expenditure in the general fund as the transfer out and also as an expenditure in the receiving departments for their operational costs. So if we were to take our operating budget here, less our capital, equipment, and debt service costs of one hundred and twenty million, and take out the two hundred and eleven million of transfers, the county operating budget would total just under seven hundred million. To further talk about our capital investment, we have in this recommended budget, one hundred and thirty-eight million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars in capital. The capital fund coming in at fifty-four-point-three million, or thirty-nine percent of all those costs. The road fund at just under seventy-eight million dollars, or fifty-six percent. And then throughout the county operating and proprietary funds, about six-point-six million dollars in other equipment and capital needs that are budgeted here. I just want to mention at this point that on June twenty-second, we will be, when we return for the adopted budget, we will be bringing forward the countywide and the facilities' five-year capital improvement plans for your review and approval. And then additional detailed capital and road fund schedules will be included in the budget book when it's published for more information there. The recommended funded positions, year-over-year, has a change The recommended funded positions, year-over-year, has a change of 20, a net change of 24. Just want to point out a couple of things here. As we mentioned earlier, this budget is pretty much a status quo, but responding to increases in service needs in Community Development Resource. And so you see the plus 20 positions that have been approved all the way through fiscal year 2021 and included in this recommended budget. 13 new positions in Health and Human Services from the adopted budget last year. And then these are, these increases are offset by a reduction of 15 in Public Works. And this isn't a true reduction of positions. This is the movement of the Western Placer Waste Management Authority positions from the county personnel position allocation into the special district personnel allocation. So no net change there. They're just moving from one allocation to another.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
And Daniel, to clarify, for the SEDRA positions, most of those are offset by revenue for fees from development. Is that correct? Probably not all, but a good portion?
Many of those positions, particularly in areas like building inspection, plan review, plans examiner positions are, would be mostly offset by fee revenue.
Thank you.
That's a great point. If I could just highlight the point being that obvious, we're in the business, so we're down in the weeds a lot, but our demand for development services are so high, and it's very unusual, so we, the goal is to make sure that we can accommodate that demand. So it'll be offset with revenues, and it's not just an increase that hadn't been thought about in that regard.
Correct.
It's a good point, Bonnie.
And then I wanted to make another point as well, if I could. The Health and Human Services uptick is also funded through state and federal grants.
That is correct.
So again, when we take those two items out, assuming that we'll see a payback from both the state and federal sources and new development, it would be interesting to see what that budget number looks like for personnel with those. So it might be a question I ask you in between meetings.
Sounds good. So moving forward, and much like all prior budget development years, we receive requests from departments that are above their base budget or new initiatives that they are looking to institute into their departments, and we call these supplemental requests. So this year, after the initial submission of those, we were able to absorb many of those requests into the base budgets for 2122, or there were sufficient resources in fiscal year 2021 to complete some of those requests as well. So today, we included in this recommended budget are 33 separate supplemental requests totaling 4.4 million. And in that request, there are 17 allocated positions included in that. Again, those are related to Health and Human Services and SEDRA's increased service demand. Some of the key initiatives that are not included in this recommended budget, first is the body worn camera program adopted by your, or approved by your board on April 27th of this year, which would have about a $1.3 million first year cost. The reason why this is not included in the budget, just due to the timing of the approval of the program and the ramp-up time it takes to get the lease agreement in place, start the recruitment of the positions, we thought it better to wait, amend the budget in fiscal year 2121, or 2122 with the actual cost for the positions hired, the actual lease agreement cost, the equipment purchases, et cetera. So we'll be bringing that forward, back to the board probably sometime with the quarter one update. And then also the American Rescue Plan Act, or about just under 78 million dollars that's been allocated to Placer County, is not currently included in this recommended budget. The county executive office is preparing an item for the June 22nd board meeting to present the background and eligible expense categories of this new, this new program for COVID response. So as the hub of most of the county business, the general fund, we'll just touch on this budget just a little bit. Again, the fiscal year 2122 budget for the general fund is about 369.6 million, which is just a 1.7% increase over fiscal year 2021. This includes 4.1 million increase in salary and benefits, 13.5 in transfers to other funds, and then again, offset by the decrease in reserve contributions. Here's our general fund projection based on our current fiscal year 2021 year-end projections, as well as our 2122 recommended budget. So periodic decreases in future fund balance per the projections are mainly attributable to planned one-time capital expenses. In fiscal year 2021, this is reflected by a general fund, capital reserve contribution to the HHS Center project of nearly 19 million. So the different designations in our general fund reserves, our general reserve, which is the combined reserve for economic uncertainties, and county general reserve is projected to be about 55.8 million. I will mention that that does meet the board's, the county's fiscal policy of maintaining a 10% economic reserve, so we do meet that. We have about $33.2 million in our capital reserve, 17.7 million in our PARs Section 115 Pension Trust Fund, and then about $14 million in unassigned fund balance. And I would just want to, again, mention, as mentioned in the staff report, that about 11 million of that is unspent CARES revenue or CARES swap revenue to general fund. So we'll be, most of it will be reprogrammed in the new fiscal year as those needs arise.
Daniel, can I ask, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Chair, can I ask a question? On the pension, what is our total liability now on that? We've got approximately...
On pension?
Ballpark.
I don't think I have.
Ballpark.
Oh, it's right there.
Okay.
So do you want me to do that now, or do you want me to catch up?
No, we'll catch up.
Okay.
We're almost there.
So starting on other post-employment costs and liabilities, this is from our most recent actuarial report for our other post-employment benefits or retiree health. And you can see highlighted there in our 2122 contribution year is a funded status of 101.4%. So we are over 100% funded in that category. They consider that super funded, and in fact, I think Andy shared with me a kind of a funny story regarding that the other day when we tried to make a deposit into our CurbIt trust fund, they rejected it because we were too well-funded. So we had to mechanically go in and adjust that to accept the payment into the trust fund. So very well-funded on OPEB and CurbIt. And moving to our pension cost summaries from our most recent valuation, which is dated June 30th, our total liabilities are 1.9 billion. We have 1.2 million dollars in total assets, and our unfunded liability amounts to about 720.2 million. So we have about a 63.3% funded ratio as of June 30, 2019. You can see our annual contribution for both miscellaneous and safety plan totaled about 84.8 million, or about 36.5% of our total payroll costs.
So Daniel, my question on that is, what would be a good target? What would be your recommendation, and where are we headed with that pension?
So generally, the common ratio number that is discussed is 80% is a good funded ratio. Obviously, we're about 17% below that right now. And if you recall, as I go forward, I'll kind of address a little bit of that.
Okay.
Subsequent slides.
I'm going to let you get through that, because I keep interrupting.
Thank you. So here are the current balances in our trust funds, in our PARs, which is our Pension Rate Stabilization Program. We have currently, as of March 31st, 17.7 million there. In our CurbIt trust fund, which is pre-funding our OPEB liabilities, we have 506.1 million dollars in that, and that represents that 101% funded ratio, and that's also as of March 31st. So going backwards in time to November 10th, when we got to your, met with your board at our pre-budget workshop, we talked about post-employment obligations, especially the pension, and how to ramp up those costs. If you recall, we presented a couple ideas. One, you know, opting out of PERS and going solo out there, and that would be a couple billion-dollar investment. And ramping up immediately with one allocation into PERS to catch to 80% would be a $350 million one-time investment to catch up that high. So we presented an alternative plan that would help stabilize future annual contributions to pension and to PERS. So if you remember this chart, the yellow, orange line on top would, or I'm sorry, starting in the middle, the red baseline number is kind of our trajectory on our annual pension obligations going forward. So starting at about $92 million in 2021, and peaks out in 2029 at 112 million. If we were to increase our PERS contributions at a level to speed up our 80% target, we would be adding about $5 million per year onto that number to speed up that, that contribution level. An alternative plan that we presented was to work on a stabilization option, which would hold our annual payments, contributions at the $99 million or the gray line on this chart. So essentially, hold it flat to what we're currently paying today to take out those increases and save upwards of $18 million or $13 million per year in annual costs. To achieve that, we would recommend stabilizing that by increasing our annual contribution into our PARs trust fund for a period of three fiscal years. And then that should give us enough with the interest earned on that fund to start drawing that down in about '24, '25 fiscal year, and then stabilizing that rate over the remainder of the program here. So this is what that looked like when we presented this in November, is we have an annual operating budget for our OPEBs of 18.4 million. And because we are so well-funded in our CurbIt trust fund and our OPEB liability, our annual actuarial determined contribution is only 12.2 million. So we have 6.2 million dollars that we're already paying for, but we don't need it to go to the CurbIt trust fund anymore. So we would pull that, plus about 1.8 million dollars of prepayment savings, and for a net contribution of $8 million a year into that pension trust fund.
And if I could interrupt, what is our trust fund return currently?
Our, we are above 7%. I think our 10-year average on it is just over 7%, 7.2?
Closer to 8.
Yeah, closer to 8, yeah. So at this point in the recommended budget, this plan for pension contributions is included in the recommended budget. And if the board, with the board's approval, that will take effect this fiscal year, or fiscal year 2122, and we'll start moving in that direction. As I mentioned earlier, the capital improvement plans, the five-year countywide CIP for capital projects, software, infrastructure that exceed 100,000 and have a useful life of longer than one year, as well as our fiscal year 2122 facilities, five-year CIP with major capital projects, including the South Placer Jail Housing Units, Auburn Jail retrofit, and our Health and Human Services Center, will all be presented to the board on June 22nd. We have 167 different special districts and county service area zones in the county budget. We have a total recommended budget for them of 34,532,160, 6.7 million dollars lower compared to fiscal year 2021, a decrease, again, due to reduction in capital projects and professional services expenditures. So that brings us to the end of, almost to the end of my presentation. And just as a reminder, after the public hearing, we would be asking the board to pass a motion of intent to adopt the recommended budgets for county operating funds, as well as county proprietary funds, pass a motion of intent to adopt the landscape lighting districts, all the special districts budgets of 34,532,160, introduce an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2122 on cutoff allocation of positions and waive oral reading. And with that, I conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Jim.
Daniel, thank you so much for this presentation. It's very comforting to see that the county's in good shape. I want to thank the CEO's office and your office for bringing us, having the quarterly updates, so we know what's going on and keeping us abreast. I see in some faces that are vaguely familiar in the back. I think they worked with you on this. Would you mind introducing them? I don't know if Supervisor Jones has met some of these individuals. Could you introduce them or have them introduce themselves?
Sure. Daniel Vick is our...
I thought that was someone else. I've never seen that man in a suit and tie. Congratulations.
He must be well-paid.
Adam Wade, management analyst, Barbara McAllister, and Chad Fenstermacher.
Okay, good team. Thank you for all your hard work. And I know you were working at home most of the time, but you actually got a lot done. So we really appreciate, no, I mean it. We really appreciate the ability that, what you were able to do and not having to put up with me coming through your halls every day. Thank you so much.
Good call, Jim. Any other questions? Cindy?
I was wondering, thank you, Robert. I was wondering, Daniel or Todd, if you could tell me, how many other counties in the state are in this kind of pre-funded position on OPEB and then on our 63% level? How do we compare to the other 57 counties? Because I think it's important for our public to understand where we sit financially and for me to understand it. How about that, too?
Supervisor, as far as our OPEB and our CurbIt trust being overfunded or more than 100% funded, we're in the very minority of county California local governments. With that, it's very rare that those, that we've reached other jurisdictions.
Do you have any numbers on that?
I don't. And we did a, we did a small survey comparing on our pension program. We did four or five neighboring counties, and all those, all four of those counties were in that 63% to 68% range as well.
Right, I remember that.
But if you'd like some specifics on comparisons, we'd be happy to get those.
I think it's really important, when we talk about a billion-dollar budget, the big, the number one issue I hear from residents that are knowledgeable is concern about the future and the pension obligations. And so the more we can identify, we're on track to address that and where we sit as compared to other counties, I think that would be really helpful for all of us.
Yeah, you know, I'd just say, and we can get those numbers, I will tell you, I think we're definitely in a very small minority of counties in terms of our financial position. And, you know, as there's, as I've stated this before, there's been a lot of forethought from this board fiscally to really put us in a really solid position. And the strategy of transferring the OPEB over to our pension side, as Daniel kind of alluded to, it's directly what we did. I think the other thing that I would say is really positive, we've addressed all the reserve components that were necessary. So there were reserves that we had for each of our major funds, and all of those are funded at the policy level that we put in place. I think that's pretty significant. It's probably the most sound financial organization I think you're going to find in the state, and that's why we were able to make major contributions when we had the downturn, and we gave money to our business community to keep them, try and keep them afloat. Those are all attributed to the things that we've been doing right here on the budget. And I, you know, I give a lot of credit to the board. The staff has been instrumental, and I think the departments also recognize that as well. So we'll get some numbers for you. I think that'd be good for a discussion on the 22nd.
Before the June adoption of the final. And I do want to just point out that I feel fortunate sitting up here that my predecessors did what they've done to create this for our employees, for our taxpayers as well, for our future.
I'm just going to echo that and build on that quickly, because I think it's a great story, and it's not easy. So it's something that we can point to, and I think sometimes when we're dealing with some of our agency partners, they tend to think that it was just easy. But if you look at the Health and Human Services building that we're just building, it took over 20 years to, that's been a deficiency for over 20 years. And just now, it wasn't like we had so much money, we didn't know what to do with it. We were really hard to establish those policies.
And we have a substation in Tahoe that is woefully inadequate. I think that's 30, 40 years. Sorry. Putting a plug in for the number two project on that.
The point being, it wasn't that it was easy, but we did some difficult things, and as a result of it, it's paying off. Jim, then, Bonnie.
Well, I just wanted to point out, it was in 2006 when we really, when you and I and the other board members at that time really got aggressive, and we worked with the county treasurer, Janine, and county auditor to make sure that we were in a position to start doing this. And I think the first year, we put 20 million, I think, in to start good, and we've been at it every year, and it's amazing where we're at. And it's just been consistent, prudent fiscal planning that got us here. So I'm very comfortable with our county budget and the way we've managed it.
Bonnie?
Thank you. Daniel, you didn't hit on all the different pots of funds that the county provides dollars for. One of our focuses is making sure that we have sustainable public safety services, right? And that includes our sheriff's office, our district attorney, and our probation department. And so I want to talk a little bit about that and how much money we have for our public safety, because those numbers have increased this year. And I asked you specifically about, you know, what our budget looks like for this year, because I think it's really... Because I think it's really important for folks to know that we continue to fund our public safety services. We have, over the last number of years, we have not cut those dollars for public safety. And if you could pull out and address, if you've got it with you this morning, what we, what was our budget last year? What's our intended budget for 21, 22 for public safety?
So the overall public safety fund budget for fiscal year 21, 22 is 223.5 million. That's an increase of $7.2 million over fiscal year 2021. Included in that, and I'm searching for the number...
Can you repeat that second number again?
The second number was a seven-point, I'm sorry, second number compared to last year?
Yes.
7.2 million dollar increase, or 3.4%. And I'm sorry, I have the amounts of transfers, but I believe the transfer of general fund discretionary revenue into the public safety fund is about 132 million for fiscal year 21, 22.
Okay.
That represents more than 50%, of the general fund discretionary revenue and the vast majority of the public safety fund budget.
Great, thank you. And I think I would like to make sure that we pull that out and show that next week when we hear this, because it's so important to people. They want to make sure that our public safety is being well-funded, which it is here in Placer County. And so I want to make sure that's clear to our residents. Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yes, thank you, Daniel. I just want to say that I would be remiss if I didn't thank my board members and my predecessor, who deserves kudos for working to minimize our pension debt, as you've done so well. Thank you all. It's put me in a good position to begin with.
Me, too.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, but before we do that, I just, I'm going to make one more final comment before we open the public hearing. That is that, you know, over the 26 and a half years and that I turn seven years old, as everybody's talked about tomorrow, our budgeting has become more exacting and more precise. And that's a very good thing, I think. But particularly in the last few years, I'm not, can't remember how long you've been there, Daniel, just a few years compared to somebody like me. But I really like breaking out the operational part of it, because we have a strong policy, for example, that says, if we get one-time revenues, we're going to put it in a one-time expenditure, like a building. We're not going to substitute or subsidize operational costs just to make it easier for budgeting purposes for the while that we have that money. So those kinds of small details are actually observed and greatly appreciated. So again, thanks for the last few years and how we're continuing that momentum. So with that, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public for comment.
Good morning. Hercule, on behalf of the Placer Business Alliance, not to correct my former colleague, but I believe it was a special meeting of the board of the Rockland Park Hotel in 2007, not 2006, where we did a number of things, not the least of which you just addressed. But the other things, steps that we took back then, of course, included the county's embracing of contracting out, privatizing where we could, those kinds of things. And to Supervisor Wiegand's question about pre-pandemic unemployment versus post-pandemic unemployment, the Placer County in February of 2020 was actually sitting right at 3.2%. State of California as a whole was sitting at 3.9%. Today, Placer sits at 5.3%, while the state as a whole is at 8.3%. So disproportionately better. And when you look at other counties who didn't come alongside their businesses the way that this board did, Sacramento County sits at 8.2%. Los Angeles County, 11.7% unemployment. In a county where they went after their businesses who tried to stay open, tried to keep people employed. And so they're paying the price for that. So this board is to be congratulated for the way that you embrace the business community throughout and the way that you continue to. And so on that note, we do want to lend our support of the Placer Business Alliance to the steps to enhance staffing and SEDRA. Because as you have pointed out, that is in response to the business environment that we are in. We actually have people looking to invest in Placer County. And in order for us to properly fulfill what the private sector needs, bringing on the additional staff in SEDRA is important, particularly some of the opportunities we have in the Tahoe Basin right now. And I know that Mr. Perdery is looking forward to capitalizing on those opportunities. And the additional staff is what's going to allow that to happen. So thank you, your board, very much for your consideration of these additional positions. We hope you move forward with them.
Thanks. Anyone else from the public to address this item?
Mr. Garabedian, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thank you, and good morning, Mike Garabedian. Good morning, supervisors. Placer County tomorrow cannot support the proposed budget because of the 20 new positions to process more permits. Right now, seven of 10 houses being built are half a million dollars or more, and the rest are, most of the rest are 400,000 to 500,000. It is poor transportation planning, long-term failure in transportation planning that means that those who are moving into those houses, those of us here now in our businesses are condemned to a future of impossible congestion that isn't going to be relieved by the projects the voters even turned down back in 2021. The Highway 65 widening, the 8065 interchange, the 15-mile new Placer Parkway freeway in particular aren't going to fix congestion or do what's needed. So excessive hiring to process more and more permits is not helpful. The staff report documents that the county executive office, our development committees and staff do not value ecosystem services. They are, the county is full speed ahead to allow Carvana to bury a 12-acre salt marsh wetland that's been there for millennia, along with 61 acres of Vernal Pool Prairie. Totally unnecessary, doesn't have to go on that particular spot. But water quality, the value from water quality, value from threatened species, fish and so on, is, has a real value. So we hope that between now and then, now and the next meeting, this, the county will identify ecosystem services that we get, the clean water, the habitat, the animals, the fresh air, the many ecosystem services that are now identified and recognizable and also of great, great value. Not to mention the agricultural community and the communities that are there that are threatened by this development and all of these permits. So we think this is a mistake to unnecessarily try to increase more building permits when it's just going to create and be subject to more congestion. And we need, right now, we need yesterday to start making a different plan instead of contributing to greenhouse gas emissions and congestion and all the problems that, the budget. You have some money to support Phase 1 of Placer Parkway, a very bad expenditure the county's already invested in. And the county is in fact a developer with what it, what it has supported in the Placer Ranch specific plan and so forth. So thanks for this opportunity to bring up these questions before you, and I hope I helped the county make some progress.
Chairman, we have no further public comment.
Anyone else from the public here? See none. We have to take these items independently. And so the first item is motion of intent regarding the budgets for the county operating funds and the county's proprietary funds.
Chairman, I'm so sorry, we need to take a five-minute break.
What's that?
We need to take a five-minute break.
We need to take a five-minute break.
We did prior to taking this motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. We will adjourn for five minutes.
Okay, the board has returned after a five-ish minute break that was necessitated for a reason that Megan is going to explain for us. Our clerk of the board, by the way.
We, we received notification that there was, on cable TV, that people were unable to see it. We took a five-minute break to verify that that issue was directly related to cable TV solely. It was, our Zoom feeds, Granicus feed, and YouTube feed are also working, which is how people would participate. The cable feed is not our issue, they're aware of it. And I, we believe it's already resolved, but we did pause just to verify that it was not further than that.
So going forward, does somebody wish to hear this part of the hearing if they go to the county's stream?
Yes, our stream.
They will get the actual...
Yep.
Great, thank you. So I can't remember what I was doing, but it was something along the lines of... We have to take these one at a time, and we're going to consider the county operating funds of something over a million dollars and our proprietary funds for about 134 million, excuse me, something over a billion dollars, and our proprietary funds of 134.9 million. So what's the question? Motion Gustafson, Second Homes, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. And now we need to consider the lighting landscaping benefit assessment and county service area permanent roads divisions, sewer maintenance districts. And they are 34.5 million. Motion Gustafson, Second Homes, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And introduce ordinance, oral reading, approving the 21, 22 uncodified allocation of positions. Motion Gustafson, Second Homes, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, Daniel. We'll now take up our 10:30 timed item, which is community development resources. And we're going to consider block grant application with regards to homebuyer assistance, planning, and technical assistance.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Deb McNally. I'm a planner with the Community Development Resource Agency. The item before you today is the proposed application for a community development block grant. This is in response to a 2021 NOFA that was released by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. We're looking to do three different projects as part of this. So we're applying for up to $715,000. The first is funding for our homebuyer assistance program, up to $500,000. And we're hoping to assist up to four households, possibly five, depending on the amount of loans. The second is a planning and technical assistance grant of up to $115,000. And this is to conduct a National Environmental Policy Act review of the Placer County Government Center. And to, as part of doing that, we'd then be able to apply for federal funds for infrastructure in support of some of our community facilities. And then the final is a planning and technical assistance grant for economic development. And we're hoping to facilitate the development of small businesses in Placer County and to also assist entrepreneurs who are hoping to launch businesses in the county and support job creation. So as part of this, we conducted a webinar on May 3rd at 11:00 a.m. to talk through these possible applications. We didn't receive any comments, and to date, we haven't received any written comments as well. But we're requesting that you conduct a public hearing now to receive any comments, and then also authorize the Community Development Resource Agency Director to execute any grant agreements and to also submit the application.
Thank you. A quick question on the NEPA $115,000. For that small amount of money, in light of what these things cost these days, I'm assuming that we're going to basically add on to our CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act document, a small amount, such that then that document will provide that we're eligible for federal assistance on future grants to help with the center.
Yeah, so we already have the CEQA document on the center, and so we're hoping to use a lot of the data that was collected there to inform the study, since this would just be for the national requirement. And then we could go through and do an environmental assessment on top of that.
Thanks. Any other questions, Devin? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to ask questions or make comments on this item?
I see no public comment, chairman.
Thanks, Megan. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll second.
Motion Home, Second Gore, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our 10:45 timed item is Public Works County-City of Roseville Joint Traffic Fee Program Annual Adjustment.
Good morning, Chairman Wiegand, members of the board. My name is Katie Jackson with the Department of Public Works. I'm here before you today to request that you conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution to increase the capital improvement program project cost estimates and corresponding fee schedule for the Placer County-City of Roseville Joint Traffic Fee Program for fiscal year 21, 21, 2022 to reflect an increase in construction costs of 4.86%. If approved today, the fees would go into place on August 9th of this year. In 2004, Placer County and the City of Roseville established a joint traffic fee program for improvements to Baseline Road and the Willerka Road Bridge. This fee program applies to new development in three of our 11 fee districts, including the Dry Creek, Placer West, and Sunset fee districts. This adjustment equates to an additional $42 per dwelling unit equivalent, or DUE, for Dry Creek, an additional $9 per DUE for Placer West, and an additional $14 per DUE for Sunset. The City of Roseville is also implementing this fee increase by the same amount, and their fees are being adjusted on July 1st. As you know, the Willerka Road Bridge was recently constructed and partially funded by this fee program, and Baseline Road is next. A portion of the, those roadway improvements may be eligible for fee credit or reimbursement up to the amount specified in the fee program. And that's why it's important to implement these annual adjustments. And with that, staff recommends that you conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the annual adjustment for the city-county fee program. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thanks, Katie. Any questions, board members? See none. This is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public for comment.
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Thank you. Yeah, please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name's Michael. I'm opposed to any fee increases. We've had many fee increases for roads, licensing and all, and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? See none. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration.
And Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, but good news, Willerka Bridge Road replacement has been completed, which is terrific. And next is Baseline Road, which has to be increased. And to this gentleman's point, these fees go to new development. So no existing residents are paying these fees. It's a fee on new homes being developed in those areas to help address the traffic needs in that community. So with that, I will move approval.
Second?
Motion Gore, Second Gustafson, Anna. Just adding your comments. Bonnie, that, over the years, my perspective, for what it's worth, we always have issues related generally to growth. Financially, of course, we just discussed our budget. One of the huge opportunities, or lack thereof, is to make sure that new development pays its fair share. If we allow development to go forward and it doesn't fully fund things like road improvements, then the community deteriorates, but the developers profit. So in my view, this is the only moral thing to do, and it's not perfect. We have to estimate what inflation is going to be, but there are methods by which we do that, and that is what we're doing here today. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now take up our 11 o'clock timed item, which is consideration of an annexation into SMD Sewer Maintenance District 2, Krieger property, and Sarah.
Hi.
Hi.
It's good to be back in person.
Yeah.
So much easier than doing Zoom. So Chair and Board, thank you for having me. I'm here on behalf of Environmental Engineering Division to present the annexation of the Krieger property. As stated in the board memo, we're requesting that the board open a public hearing to a... As stated in the board memo, we're requesting that the Board open a public hearing to adopt the resolution, which is included in the staff report. This is to annex the Krieger property located at APN one-three-six dash one-seven-one dash zero-three-five. We're annexing it into the boundaries of County Service Area Twenty-eight, Zone of Benefit One-seventy-three, Dry Creek. The Krieger property is located east of Auburn-Folsom Road on Eden Rock Drive in Granite Bay and consists of approximately five acres. The current annexation fee for this reimbursement is to Sewer Maintenance District Number Two, Granite Bay, and it's one thousand five hundred dollars. Staff supports this request, and in order to move forward, we request the Board open the public hearing, adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex this property into the Sewer Maintenance District Two, Granite Bay, also known as SMD Two. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you. See no questions from Board members. This is a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing.
Chairman, I see no public comment.
No one on Zoom, anyone here wish to address this item? See none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board.
Second.
Motion Jones, Second Gustafson, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, and welcome back again. We'll now take up our eleven o'five timed item, Public Works, Zone of Benefit, Sheridan Sewer Area Twenty-eight, dissolution and annexation into Sewer Maintenance District One, if I can say that. Robin.
Okay, good morning, Chair Wigan.
Good morning.
And distinguished members of the Board.
And welcome back to you, too.
Thank you. Good to see y'all.
Yep.
I'm with Environmental Engineering Department today is requesting that you conduct a public hearing and receive comments and consider protests, and if protests to the annexation have not been received by more than fifty percent of the total number of property owners residing within the proposed zone, to do the following. Number one, adopt a resolution dissolving Zone of Benefit Six, Sheridan Sewer CSA Twenty-eight. Number two, adopt a resolution to annex all parcels formerly located in Zone of Benefit Six, Sheridan Sewer CSA Twenty-eight, consisting of two hundred and seventy-eight parcels and eight hundred and thirty-four acres into the boundaries of Sewer Maintenance District Number One, or SMD One. And number three, adopt an ordinance amending Section thirteen-twelve-three-fifty A and E of the Placer County Code to separate the existing sewer service fees for SMD One into a base rate for operation and maintenance and a debt service rate associated with regional infrastructure, and remove reference to Sheridan Sewer CSA in the code. For background, Sheridan Sewer CSA has two hundred and seventy-eight parcels. A hundred and eighty-nine of those parcels are connected, and they total two hundred and eleven equivalent dwelling units. In comparison, SMD One in North Auburn consists of approximately eight-three-hundred equivalent dwelling units. Staff is recommending the Sheridan Sewer CSA be dissolved and the territory annexed into SMD One to allow for long-term stabilization of sewer rates by spreading costs and risks over a larger group of customers and to reduce administrative redundancy by achieving increased administrative efficiencies. The proposed actions will not increase or decrease the number of connections in the Sheridan Sewer area. The proposed dissolution is governed by California Government Code, Section two-five-two-one-seven, and pursuant to this section, letters explaining the proposed reorganization were sent to property owners located in Sheridan Sewer CSA boundaries on May eighteenth. In addition, I approached the Sheridan MAC in January and in, in May to discuss this topic and received no opposition. The letter on May eighteenth provided instructions regarding the process to submit an official protest letter. Clerk of the Board has been designated recipient of any protest letters and will provide a report detailing number of valid protests submitted. So to dissolve the Sheridan Sewer CSA, your Board must hold a public hearing, and if a majority protest does not exist, adopt a resolution dissolving the Sheridan Sewer CSA. On May eleventh, in accordance with Government Code Sections of two-five-two-one-seven, your Board adopted Resolution of Intention two-oh-two-one dash oh-eight-six, establishing a time and date for this public hearing today. The hearing for the proposed dissolution was advertised on, in Sacramento B on May twenty-first and May twenty-eighth, and posted in three locations. There is a request for a second public hearing today to also annex the parcels from Sheridan Sewer CSA into the boundaries of SMD One. So in this second public hearing, we're requesting you adopt a resolution approving the annexation. Again, on May eleventh, in accordance with California Health and Safety Code, Section four-eight-nine-six, four-eight-nine-seven, your Board adopted Resolution of Intention two-oh-two-one oh-eight-seven, establishing a time and date for this public hearing today. It was advertised on May twenty-first and May twenty-eighth in Sacramento B as well and posted in three locations. Regarding the third request of the Board today, we are requesting that your Board split the existing SMD One sewer service rate, monthly rate of ninety-seven, or ninety-five-seventy-eight into a base rate of sixty-two-seventy-four per month per EDU for treatment, or, sorry, for operation and maintenance, and an existing debt service fee of thirty-three dollars and four cents per month per EDU. And the existing debt service fee is associated with the regional infrastructure that was built between North Auburn and the City of Lincoln, includes the pump station pipeline and the, the upgrade to the treatment plant. Only rate payers who utilize the regional infrastructure will incur the debt service portion of the fee. So in effect, SMD One sewer fees will not be going up, it's just being split into two pieces, a base rate and a debt service rate, and Sheridan, if annexed into SMD One, would only pay the base rate. So again, to go over the proposed actions, or the recommended actions we are requesting today, we are requesting that the Board dissolve Sheridan Sewer CSA. I'm sorry, conduct a public hearing to receive comments to consider protests, and if protests have not been received for more than fifty percent of the total number of property owners residing within the Sheridan Zone, to do number one, adopt a resolution dissolving Zone of Benefit Six, Sheridan Sewer CSA, consisting of two hundred and seventy-eight parcels. Number two, adopt a resolution to annex all parcels formerly located in Sheridan Sewer CSA, consisting of eight hundred and thirty-four acres into the boundaries of SMD One, and number three, adopt an ordinance amending Section thirteen-twelve-three-fifty of the Placer County Code to separate the existing sewer service fees for SMD One into a base rate for operation and maintenance and a debt service rate for existing debt service. And with that, I would like to entertain any questions you may have. I know it's a lot.
Thank, thanks, Robin. Any questions, the Board members at this time? I see none. So I will open the public hearing, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. And is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
I see no public comment, Chairman.
See no public comment, so I'll close the public hearing, and then we will tabulate the vote with the clerk.
No protests were received.
No protests were received, so now we are being asked to consider the three actions that Robin just articulated.
Mr. Chair, can I clarify that we had no protests related to the dissolution of the, of the Zone of Benefit and no protest as to the annexation?
Thank you, Karen. So we're being asked to consider a resolution dissolving the Zone of Benefit, just discussed, annexed that zone essentially into SMD One, and adopt an ordinance with regards to the service fees, broken into two parts, but it's essentially reductions, Sheridan area, when you take out the debt service related to the SMD One district.
Can I move approval?
Sure. Can we take them all at one time, or?
Considering what we're doing, it would actually be better if we took them individually.
So the answer is no.
That's right.
So I move approval of the first one, which is the resolution dissolving Zone of Benefit Six.
Motion Gore, Second Jones, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And then I'll move to annex all new parcels into SMD One.
Motion Gore, Second Jones, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And lastly, I'll move to adopt an ordinance amending Section thirteen-point-one-two-point-three-five-oh, et cetera, et cetera.
Motion Gore, Second Jones, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks to staff on behalf of my Sheridan constituents, appreciate the work. Thank you. We now get to take up department items, so first is facility services, water sewer, stormwater improvements at the County Government Center. Dan.
Lots of sewer today, isn't it? Lots of sewer.
What did I say?
Lots of sewer today.
Oh, there is lots of sewer.
Good morning, Chairman Wigan and Board Supervisors. My name is Dan Richards, I'm a senior architect with Capital Improvements for the County. Thank you very much for letting us bring this project for you today, we appreciate it. What this is specifically is the new water sewer and service, water sewer and storm drain improvements for the Placer County Government Center, PCGC. And so what we're asking of you today is three action items. The first is to approve a consultant service agreement with Dewberry Engineering to provide civil engineering services for the water sewer and stormwater improvement project at the PCGC. The second item is for those services to approve an amount of not to exceed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for contract. And the third is to authorize a purchasing manager to sign all required documents subject to departmental review and available funding. So with that, I'd like to go to the background on this project. Previously, your Board approved a master plan update for the PCGC campus. This master plan update was spanned twenty years, and it was in direct support for both private and county uses, and it essentially was a roadmap on how to develop on the campus in a very clear, logical, and well-thought-out way. As part of this master plan look, the infrastructure was reviewed, and this was relative to water, storm drains, sewer, power, and gas, and recommendations were made on, were, were made relative to the replacement of those infrastructures. As you, as you know, the, the campus is remnants of basically buildings from World War Two, so they're coming up on eighty years of service, and in many cases, they're failing, and they're seem to be always in a constant state of repair, so we want to improve that, and that'll really help the campus out. The master plan is outlined over a twenty-year period, but in four, five-year phases, we're calling tiers, and within each tier, proposed infrastructure improvements are being made, and this would follow tier-one improvements. In June two thousand and twenty, your Board approved the five-year capital improvement plan to include improvements for these, this tier-one improvement for the utility and infrastructure. This provided funding to support the infrastructure replacement for the campus as a whole, but also in direct relationship to fully support the new HHSC building in which you recently approved. In May two thousand and twenty-one, your Board approved a design bid contract, return to construction for the design and delivery of a new HHSC, or the Health and Human Services Center, building. This infrastructure project will directly support that building for tie-ins of all the major utilities such as water sewer and storm drain. And the construction of these tier-one improvements are gonna follow a design bid-build process, at which time, when the numbers are coming in, when we go out for bid, we will approach the Board under a separate date for, come back to Board for action on that item. In May two thousand and twenty-one, your Board approved the Memorandum of Agreement, or MOA, for the PCGC Water System Distribution and Ownership, and this is a, a good, basically a partnering between the County and NID and PCWA to deliver water to the, to the PCGC campus. Per this MOA, this is the first project, I guess you could say, out of the chute, and it'll be under the purview, review of PCWA. The tier-one system infrastructure will be built to the PCWA standards, and the goal is that in the future, this water system will transfer ownership to PCWA for control and maintenance moving forward. So that's a, a good thing for the County. And regarding the engineering selection, Capital Improvements, along with procurement, went to the pre-qualified list of civil engineers that we have on file, and we have, we received three RFPs and fees back to us, and they were carefully reviewed and for content, for clarity, and make sure that the scope is fully covered, that was necessary to deliver the tier-one improvements, and Dewberry Engineering was selected as the most qualified firm. And so Capital Improvements has negotiated a consultant service agreement, or CSA, with Dewberry, and, and this is for the preparation of plans and specifications so that we can go out to bid to, to various contractors, and when that happens, we'll come back to you guys for, for consideration. Regarding the fiscal impact, the cost of this consultant agreement is to not exceed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. It is budgeted in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, it's a capital-funded project. It's also part of the five-year capital improvement plan. These plans and specs that are gonna be developed will be competitively bid, and after we receive those bids and we, and we review them, then we'll bring them back to you for a consideration and, and for funding. So we're gonna need that, obviously, to complete the project, so if you have any questions on this project, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Thank you. Any questions, Board members? See none, anyone from the public wish to ask a question or comment?
I see none, Chairman.
See none, I'll bring it back to the Board for consideration. Motion Home, Second Gustafson, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Health and Human Services, contract with Placer County Office of Education for Child Care Services. And Greg.
Good morning.
Hi.
Chairman Wigan, members of the Board, I'm Lisa Soto, Program Manager for the Cow Works and Employment Services Programs in the Human Services Division of Health and Human Services. Before you today is a request to approve a contract with Placer County Office of Education for Child Care Services for the Cow Works Welfare at Work Programs for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed four million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the contract with risk management and County Council concurrence, and to sign subsequent amendments up to a hundred thousand consistent with the agreement's subject matter and scope of work with risk management and County Council concurrence. In the way of background, the childcare funding continuum for Cow Works clients is comprised of three stages, stages one, two, and three. Placer County Health and Human Services has contracted with PCOE for the administration of stage-one funds since nineteen ninety-eight. By contracting with PCOE to make the direct childcare provider payments, this maximizes the efficiency and cost-effectiveness of managing the three program stages. Under the contract with PCOE, an expected average of about a hundred and thirty children per month are estimated to receive childcare services for fiscal years two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three to facilitate their parents' efforts to find and maintain employment. This contract totaling four million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, which includes childcare payments, and Placer County Office of Education Administration, is included in the Department's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two-two budget, and will also be included in the Department's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two-three budget. It is funded exclusively with federal and state funds, therefore, no county general funds are required, and the contract is on file with the Clerk of the Board for review. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your consideration of this item.
Thank you. Any questions by Board members? See none, anyone from the public wish to comment or ask questions?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
See none, I'll bring it back to the Board. Motion Home, Second Gustafson, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, continuing with the HHS Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Block Grant, Amy.
Good afternoon, Board, it's nice to see you in person, good to be here, I'm Amy Ellis, the Director-
I'm Amy Ellis, the Director of the Adult System of Care. I'm here with an action item for you to adopt a resolution ratifying the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Substance Use Prevention and Treatment Block Grant Funding Allocation and Application, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the resulting agreement and any resulting documentation with California Department of Healthcare Services in an amount not to exceed one million five hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and to sign any subsequent amendments not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars with risk management and county council concurrence. The Department of Healthcare Services utilizes this revenue agreement to outline our requirements and for this federal funding for mandated substance use services. Placer County has established a continuum of care with this federal funding, along with our state drug, medical, and realigned funding, to best meet the substance use treatment and prevention needs of its residents. Some services are offered by county staff, such as our screening clinic, our assessments, ports of collaborative courts, and general case management, but most of our treatment services are offered by contracted community partners in multiple levels of care. During the COVID-nineteen pandemic, our screening clinics closed and were only offered by telephone, but we're happy to announce that our in-person screenings have resumed as of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. We still offer phone and other options to ensure access. This is fully funded with federal funds and will be included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and this contract requires no county general fund contribution. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Amy. COVID changes, thickened circumstances like this, it's really important to have in-service, in-person services, but also maybe they could be added to dramatically under certain conditions if online more quick response was, was available. Is that sort of taken root, or do you see any changes coming down as related to what we've learned from, from these kinds of things?
Yeah, we're really reliant upon our federal guidance about what we can and can't do electronically, but we are still able to do a lot of things under the, the guidance change, and we are advocating to be able to continue to do electronic and other means of services to best serve people.
Yeah, might be. Depending on how that emerges, I think the board might be interested in hearing some of those kind of fundamental changes that may or may not go forward, but.
Yeah, okay, great. We can, I can bring that back.
Any other board members? Anyone from the public have a comment, question?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board for action.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Gore, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is a psychiatric health facility amendment with North Valley Behavioral Health.
Again, I'm Amy Ellis with the Director of the Adult System of Care. The action item is to approve an amendment with North Valley Behavioral Health to increase the contract by four hundred and seventy-four thousand for an overall contract amount not to exceed one million eight hundred thousand dollars from November first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement and sign subsequent amendments not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, consistent with the agreement's subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. So Placer County began this contract with North Valley Behavioral Health in two thousand eighteen in our search to expand our continuum of psychiatric health facilities, because we were constantly at capacity, and psychiatric health facilities allow us to draw down some state and federal funding that other placements do not. So this particular site provides safe, less expensive, and supportive treatment environment for county and contractor staff, collaborate on the provision of services until a safe and appropriate discharge in the community can take place. It was previously amended to include the addition of a third PUF operated by the same organization in the, in Yuba City and Roseville areas, and to increase the overall dollar amount, but our numbers continue to exceed our projections, and we need to amend it yet again. Due to COVID, there are numbers of hospitalizations did increase by about sixteen percent. So, so we are back here with this amendment today. So the amendment includes increasing by four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars during fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and funding for this amended amount consists of eighty-nine percent of that ability to build, the state and federal funding, and eleven percent in county general funds. And it is included in our department's fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget.
Thanks, Amy. Any questions by board members? Seeing none, anyone from the public?
I see no public comment, Chairman.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Gore, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And last but not least for Amy is emergency housing support services contract.
Yes, Amy Ellis, Adult System of Care for the record, here with two action items today. The first, to approve the amendment with the Gathering Inn for Emergency Housing and Supportive Services for a revision term of July first, twenty twenty, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and to increase the contract by one million forty-one thousand, fourteen dollars to cover the extension for an overall contract amount not to exceed two million two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the amendment and to sign subsequent amendments up to a hundred thousand dollars, consistent with subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. And the second action item is to approve the associated site access agreement between the county and the Gathering Inn to extend the term of the site access agreement to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and authorize the Director of Facilities Management or Designee to execute the amended site access agreement with risk management and county council concurrence. On May ninth, two thousand seventeen, your board approved the conditional use permit for an emergency shelter at one one four four two E Avenue in Auburn, California, in the Placer County Government Center for a maximum of five-year term. On June fifth, two thousand eighteen, in response to an RFP, Placer County Board of Supervisors approved a service contract and associated site access agreement with the Gathering Inn to operate the one hundred-bed Auburn Shelter for Emergency Housing and Supportive Services. Between May first, twenty twenty, and April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the Auburn Emergency Housing and Supportive Services Program, now known in the community as the Gathering Inn Mid Placer, has served two hundred and seventy-nine unduplicated adults experiencing homelessness in Placer County. A county general fund contribution for the additional ten months in the amount of one million forty-one thousand, fourteen dollars for general operating support to, to the ongoing provision of emergency housing and supportive services has been included in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Questions by board members? Anyone from the public?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board. Motion Gustafson, second Jones, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next department item is traverse subscription implementation project, Twyla.
Good morning. I'm up on your screen today instead of in person. So good morning, Chair Wiegand, and happy birthday as well tomorrow. Mr. Leopold and Ms. Schwab, and also the rest of the supervisors. Twyla Abrahamson for the Director, the Director of the Children's System of Care, and I'm pleased to be here today to present this one item. So the Children's System of Care needs to transition from a physical file management system to an electronic file system for storage and retrieval of records and documents for child welfare services. The Child Welfare Services statewide platform is a DOS-based system that does not allow for this. The social workers spend most of their time in the field, and they often must quickly make decisions and do not have the luxury of time to go back to the office to gather information. Northwoods is a technology company that is focused on providing customized software to human service organizations that have social workers and caseworkers. The Traverse software is a content collection and case discovery solution that integrates with case data, providing an easy-to-use and searchable document management system that will assist our social workers to collect and view content regarding abuse, neglect, foster care, and adoption cases more effectively and formatively. The software has several, several unique features that will save staff time and will provide continuity of critical informations as cases are reassigned to different social workers over time. One of these features is the ability to cull information from multiple case files, assisting social workers in case discovery for the courts, and uncovering correlations through all case-related documentation and, and data in a matter of seconds versus manually culling through boxes and boxes of volumes of prior case history to see if they have a type of incident has occurred. So for instance, if domestic violence or the mention of guns has been in police reports over and over, the software will pull that out as a frequent issue from the case history for the social worker to note before going out on a call. That does not go into the CWS system at the same way. The police reports are not scanned in, they're not a scannable feature of CWS-CMS. So the software will, will improve our service delivery, maximize productivity, and make informed decisions to achieve better outcomes. The Placer County Information Technology Governance Committee has also reviewed and approved this project moving forward. Procurement Policy Section three point five E allows for the purchase of goods or services where competitive proposals do not produce an advantage or is impractical. These services meet this exception due to the unique nature of how the system handles the documents. The Procurement Services Division and HHS are in agreement that a full request for proposals will not provide a different solution and would negatively impact the ability to implement the system in the timeline provided. So the agreement before you today covers implementation and three years of traverse subscription. So we're requesting that your board take the following action. Approve a contract with Northwoods for a traverse subscription and implementation project from June one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for a total amount not to exceed one million fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, and authorize the purchasing, purchasing manager to sign the agreement with risk management and county council concurrence, and to authorize change orders not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Funding for the first year of this contract includes three hundred thousand in in-who cares funding and one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars in state funding, and is also included in the department's twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two budgets, and will also be included then in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So fiscal years twenty-one, twenty-two, and fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three will be funded with only state funds, and no additional county general funds are required. So I thank you for your consideration, and I, or a member of our IT or procurement teams, will be happy to answer any questions about this item.
Thanks, Twyla. Bonnie?
Thank you, Twyla. Just a quick question, what other counties implement, are using this software?
Monterey, Yuba, and Ventura counties so far. Yolo is also considering it.
So it sounds like it's a, is it, it's a newer system, and do other counties use different systems, or is this one come about because those other systems aren't as effective?
That's correct. So the statewide system, which is called the CWS-CMS system, all the states, for the most part in the state of California, use that system. That is where the repository of the vast amount of child welfare data is. That's how we can also see if a family has moved from county to county, maybe they've had abuse and neglect reports in another county. The problem is, is this is an antiquated system that they have been trying to upgrade and redo for many, many years. They first started talking about upgrading the system about fifteen years ago at least, and there is a statewide project to do that. In fact, that's where some of our county folks are down there helping out, and it's called CARES. However, the CWS system does not allow for scanning into it, and so all of the additional reports, police reports, all of those different things can't be, they can't be scanned into the system. So finally, several of the counties have just said, we really, really need something. Some of the other ones that we've looked at before that we use, say, on our behavioral health side or our medical services side, they don't interact in the same way that Traverse does with the CWS-CMS system. So it is relatively new. I can tell you, we've been talking about this for the past two years, and again, Monterey and Yuba and Ventura are actively using it and getting very, very good outcomes, but this would also allow us the three years to figure out if this will be a good system for some subscription. One can hope by, at the end of three years, that the new CWS-CMS system would actually be operational, but we've been saying that for the last fifteen years.
Great. Thank you. So basically, we're taking the bull by the horn and saying, you know what? We have a problem, we're going to do something about it. So I.
That is entirely correct, Supervisor. Yes.
Thank you.
Great question, great discussion, Bonnie. Good. Any other questions? Seeing none, anyone from the public?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move approval.
Excuse me. Motion Gore, second Jones, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, Human Services, creation of the Classification Multidisciplinary Interview Center Coordinator. Kate?
Still, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Kate Sampson with your Human Resources Department. Today, I'm here to request introduction of an ordinance amending your uncodified schedule of classifications and compensation in order to create a new classification of Multidisciplinary Interview Center Coordinator. The Multidisciplinary Interview Center, or MDIC, resides in the District Attorney's Office, and it's a center designed to conduct forensic interviews with children and developmentally delayed adults who may have been the victim of abuse or other crimes. When investigating, it's best practice for a trained forensic interview to interview the individual just one time to minimize further trauma. This practice takes a very coordinated approach that includes the Children's System of Care, county council, involve law enforcement agencies, medical professionals, victim advocacy groups, mental health professionals, and other relevant local service agencies. Placer County really leads the state in this innovative area, and over the years, the MDIC has grown. At the request of the District Attorney's Office, Human Resources recently approved a new classification of a coordinator to oversee the activities in the center. The position will focus on overseeing the day-to-day operations, as well as ensuring victim safety, conducting effective forensic investigations, and coordinating service integration with the other agencies. The proposed ordinance before you today incorporates this new classification, again, into your schedule of classifications and compensation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Kate. Any questions? Seeing none, any comments, questions from the public?
I see no public comment, Chairman.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for consideration. Motion Gustafson, second Jones, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And sorry, Amy, I should have jumped you, but I wasn't on the ball.
No problem.
So we're adjourned as the Board of Supervisors and convening as the in-home supportive services public authority.
Okay, good morning again. Sorry, Chair Wiegand and members of the board, I'm Amy Ellis with the Director of the Adult System of Care, and the action item today is to approve the in-home supportive services or IHSS Public Authority Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, in the amount of one million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven. The IHSS Public Authority was established on December third, two thousand and two, as required. The Public Authority is a separate legal entity whose purpose is to provide assistance to IHSS recipients in finding independent home care providers through the establishment of a registry, the investigation of the qualifications and background of those potential providers, the establishment of a referral system under which providers shall be referred to recipients, and the provision of training for recipients and providers, and newly this year, creation of a backup registry for those providers when theirs is ill. In addition, for the purpose of labor negotiations regarding wages, benefits, and other terms and condition of employment, the Public Authority is deemed to be the employer of record for IHSS independent providers. The Public Authority is supported by eight county staff who are assigned to this unit of the approximate four thousand seven hundred IHSS recipients projected to be served in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Approximately thirteen hundred of those will require the, to receive assistance in finding an appropriately skilled and registered caregiver. The Public Authority staff will also assist four thousand three hundred IHSS providers with employment enrollment, orientation, training, support, and counseling services during that year. The county share of the IHSS provider wages is identified in the Health and Human Services Client Aid Budget. It is funded through a combination of federal and, and state funds and two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars in county general fund. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions by board members? Seeing none, any comments from the public?
I see no public comment, Chairman.
With that, again, I'll bring it back to the board. Motion Holmes, second Gustafson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
We'll now adjourn as the in-home supportive services public authority and reconvene as Placer County Board of Supervisors. Placer County Board of Supervisors to take up probation item, contract renewal consideration from Nonya.
Good morning, Chairman Wagen, members of the board. It's just barely morning. My name is Chris Hardeman. I'm the Administrative and Fiscal Operations Manager for the Placer County Probation Department. I'm here today with Mark Egger, the Placer County Probation Department's Probation Manager who oversees juvenile probation operations, and Brett Wood, the Placer County Purchasing Manager, is also available if you have any questions regarding the procurement aspects of our item today. The probation department, in conjunction with Coineania Foster Homes Incorporated, operates the Crisis Resolution Center, or CRC, in Loomis. The CRC provides emergency shelter for youth in crisis who have not yet formally entered the criminal justice system. The CRC provides youth needing emergency shelter with appropriate counseling as well as family counseling to address problematic areas for each family. The CRC also provides a 365-day-per-year, 24-hour-a-day hotline that will provide counseling to youth and/or their families in times of crisis. We're proud to say that throughout the pandemic over the last year, that other than a short closure at the front end of things, as we sorted out what was required, the facility has been up and running continuously. So the probation department has worked with county executives, procurement services, to bring this contract to your board. Due to the complexity of services offered, the fact that members of the community and our partners are familiar with the current location, the excellent rapport and services provided by Coineania and their staff, as well as the need to offer these services continually, there are no other viable vendors able to provide this comprehensive combination of services within Placer County. Our collaborative partners, including the Placer County Sheriff's Office, Placer County District Attorney's Office, Health and Human Services, Children's System of Care, the police departments from the cities of Roseville, Rockland, Lincoln, and Auburn, are all supportive of renewing this contract either through their agency's referrals to the CRC, their participation in the Comprehensive Multi-Agency Juvenile Justice Committee, or both. The costs associated with this agreement are included within the department's fiscal year 2021-22 proposed budget and are funded with state monies for programs and services designated by the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act. At this time, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any question by board members? Jim?
I don't have a question. I just want to give a shout out to Coineania. They do an excellent job with the Crisis Resolution Center. I've been down there and I've seen the work they do, so I'm confident that they do the best job that can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. See no other questions from board members. Comments from the public?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Second?
Motion, Holmes, Second, Gustafson. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a list of procurement items. Brett?
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Brett Wood, your purchasing manager. I am here with a plethora of action items on this particular agenda.
I said list. But you're better.
Actually, what we're requesting from your board today is the approval of an amendment in the amount of $40,000 to an annual service contract with Sonatral Sacramento LLC for security system monitoring and maintenance services with a new maximum amount of $250,000 for the period through June 30 of this year. We're also asking your board to approve the renewal of that contract in the amount of $250,000 for the period of July 1 through June 30 of 2022, and then the approval to renew that contract for an additional two years with a not to exceed amount of 10% above that original amount. At this time, we're also requesting your board's approval of the master services agreement with Sonatral for security system equipment, installation, and repairs for various Placer County facilities in the maximum amount of 1.2 million for the period of July 1 of this year through June 30 of 2024. As a bit of history for your board, we've established a master services agreement in 2016 with Sonatral that standardized the security and camera and those security systems, the cameras, the FOB access for the majority of our county facilities. And we did that because prior to that, they would go out for bid and they would be awarded to different companies, and it involved integration issues and multiple agencies utilizing different systems, and just it was a dysfunctional approach. So with the cooperation of the IT Information Technology Department, previously the Admin Services Department, and the Facilities Team, we standardized on utilizing Sonatral for county facilities, the majority of, not all, but the majority of county facilities. Since that establishment in 2015, we've done 68 new projects in the amount of approximately $1.1 million over the last several years. And within each of those projects is a monthly maintenance component, and that's what's resulting in the two different contracts. We have a master services agreement which defines the terms under which we operate with Sonatral and under the terms by which they'll do new installations, as well as the monthly maintenance contract of $250,000 annually. With that, respectfully stand for any questions and respectfully request your board's approval of these action items.
Any questions by board members? See none. Anyone from the public?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
With that, I will bring it back to the board.
I'll move approval.
Motion, Gore, Second, Jones. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, you. Motion carries. Thank you, Brett. Last item, Public Works. Last department item, Public Works. French Meadows Forest Restoration Project awards. Jared?
Yes. Oh. I mean, yes, it's French Meadows.
I'm excited about it as well. All right. Good afternoon, Chair Wagen, board members. Jared Deck, Program Manager for Environmental Engineering. In continued efforts to move the French Meadows project forward, I'm here before you to present two contracts for award. The work on these contracts will consist of small tree mechanical thinning, massification thinning, and hand thinning. All items will bid through the French Meadows Tree Thinning Qualified List. Funding for this project will be through timber receipts, a CAL FIRE grant through the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and a Nature Conservancy grant as well. In order to move forward with these contracts, staff recommends your board approve 14 bid items for market forestry management for a total of $612,732.20, along with another approved bid item for Summit Forest Incorporated for a total of $81,156.60, and also authorize the CEO office or a designated to execute contracts and change orders up to 10% for both of those contracts. If you have any questions, I can answer those now and close out to these department items.
Thanks. Questions, board? See none. Anyone from the public?
I see no public comment.
No public comment? Bring it back to the board. Motion, Gustafson, Second, Holmes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will now adjourn to closed session during lunch, and county council will report out.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of personnel.
With the confidence that they're returning, the board is returning from closed session, and council will report out.
The board meant in closed session to consider one public employee performance for county council. The board authorized me to report out that the evaluation was considered to be competent and ineffective, and a merit increase was approved. That concludes the report out of closed session.
For the record, I'll just report out that the report out was significantly above whatever words you used that I've forgotten already, so.
Thank you.
So we'll now take up our 1 o'clock timed item, which is a third-party appeal of a planning commission's approval of AT&amp;T minor use permit.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board of Supervisors. I am Bennett Smithart with the Planning Services Division. Our next item today is a third-party appeal of the planning commission's approval of a minor use permit for a cellular communications tower. The subject property is located at 545 Millertown Road in the Ofer area. The parcel is zoned residential agriculture, combining a minimum building site of 100,000 square feet. And here is the site plan. The subject communications tower we are discussing today is utilizing existing driveway path to the proposed site. Here is a section of the communications tower. So this is a monopine communication tower, so it's a communications tower that looks like a pine tree. With this minor use permit request, there are three elements to this communications tower. First is typical cellphone reception, the cellular infrastructure on here. Next is the first net, which is a dedicated communications line for first responders. And third is the Connect America Fund. So if you see on here, there's an antenna. Antennas, so it'll provide high-speed internet to neighboring residences. The residents can put an antenna on their house, point it toward that antenna, and they'll get high-speed internet. So looking at the bottom here, we have a CMU wall that was requested by our planning commission. They wanted to have some additional fire protection since there's a diesel generator on the other side as opposed to the solid wood fence. Also, with the CMU walls, it will provide additional noise suppression as well for the equipment that's behind the wall. And also, two additional carriers will be able to locate on this communications tower as well, so you could have, you know, like a Verizon or a T-Mobile locate and help their business with that. The applicant provided us with visual simulations of what this tower will look like on the property. Taking a look on the left side, on the top, there's existing, on the bottom, proposed. So this is probably one of the more prominent views. There are no trees in the background, so when looking into the site, you see the monopine tower itself. Looking at the right side, again, existing, proposed, on the bottom, the monopine tower is more hidden by trees. So depending on which vista you are, it's more, the communications tower is more prominent. And another one, so this is from property on the northwest corner or side of this parcel, looking into the site. So it shows the monopine tower just over the tree line. So my best explanation of the tower, it's, you know, it is visible, but it's the same color and the same texture of the surrounding trees. So if you know it's there, you'll know it, but if you're just driving through, you may not catch it. So in terms of the communications tower, we wanted to, with some of the public comment we received, a lot of the people associated these towers with commercial and industrial areas, so we wanted to make sure or do an analysis and see if there's towers in rural areas. So we took a look, and on Pleasant Hill Road, there's a 140-foot monopine tower, so we wanted to make that comparison. There are these types of towers in rural areas. Going back to the simulations, part of the public comment we received is they were questioning the accuracy of these simulations, so we thought it'd be good to go back a few years and find some, a project that has used these simulations that is now constructed. So this was 2015, so on the left, we have without the tower before. The middle shows the simulated, this one's 115-feet simulated tower, then on the right, you see the constructed tower. So as you can see with this picture, you know, similar textures and colors as the surrounding trees, but you can identify this as a tower versus a tree. And if you adjust the camera angle a little bit, you know, if this is behind a tree, it would be very hard to tell, or a group of trees, it'd be hard to tell that this is a tower and not a tree. So part of the intent of AT&amp;T coming in and placing this tower is to fill a gap in coverage. So this is the before map, so they basically have, the colors represent different levels of coverage. Blue is the lowest, yellow is kind of okay coverage, and green is good. So in the center, there's a red dot. This is the subject site, and there's a lot of yellow and blue, so with the addition of the tower, it adds a lot more green to that. Also, with the application, the applicant considered some alternative sites. The subject parcel was actually not their first choice. They looked at a higher elevation. So as you see on this map in yellow, there was three candidates that they considered, and they did not go forward with that. The property owner chose not to construct the tower there because of opposition from neighbors, so they chose candidate C, and that's 545 Millertown that we're discussing So the minor use permit started at the September 19, 2019 zoning administrator hearing. At this hearing, we received public comment about visual impacts, community character, and health and safety. The applicant offered to lower the height of the tower. It originally came in at 120 feet, and they offered to lower it to 88 feet, and that's what it is today. They also added a fence and roof structure. The zoning administrator expressed concerns about some of the items addressed and said he needed further research, so he continued that item to the October 17, 2019 hearing. So additional, at this hearing, additional public comment was received under the same topic. This time, we had one individual speaking in support of the tower. The applicant said the tower is compatible with the vicinity and presents no safety concern. The zoning administrator took action to deny the minor use permit, saying it wasn't compatible with the surrounding community, it had visual impacts on the immediate environment. An appeal was filed, and it was heard at the January 9, 2020 Planning Commission hearing. After staff's presentation, several, seven individuals spoke in opposition, and one individual spoke in support of the communications tower. Our commissioners discussed the need for the communications towers for first responders and law enforcement. The minor use permit was tentatively approved pending staff's preparations of finding and the completion of a sequel review. Part of that staff's analysis was due to, at this hearing, several members of the public indicated that this project was associated with a Crystal Springs bathhouse, so we wanted to dive a little deeper into that, and so AT&amp;T submitted a historic architectural assessment of this property on January 7 of this year, and it concluded that the building is not a historic property under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, and because it's not eligible for the National Register under criteria A, B, C, and D, and I believe that Architectural Historian is here today or available today. So therefore, staff recommends the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to provisions of Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 183650 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class III, New Constructional Small Structures. Two, deny the appeal by Ciara George and the Millertown Community Group, and three, deny the zoning administrator's decision to deny the minor use permit, supported by findings stated in the staff report. I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Bennett. Any questions by board members?
I don't see any at this point.
Tell the world they don't go far, Bennett. It was a joke. Okay, so next, we're going to hear from the group that appealed, and Twilight's going to get 15 minutes to make a presentation. I think that will cover your needs, right, Mark?
If I could, just before this presentation goes forward, the recommendation that's up there is, there's some mistakes in it. You should use the action requested in the staff report instead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Mark Wright out here today as a resident of 10465 Dutchman's Mine Road. It's three properties up from the subject parcel. My grandfather purchased our property in 1924, and my family's lived and contributed to the community since that time. Today, I was asked by my neighbors to present PowerPoint in our appeal, and after I finish, some of them may use their time to elaborate. And could you guys raise your hands just so he gets a sense? could you guys raise your hands, just so he gets a sense? Many other folks weren't able to join us today at 1:00. And we appreciate your visiting the area to understand our concerns and the character of the community. And I have a lot to cover, so if you'd excuse me for talking fast, I like to talk fast and get done. But I want to go a bit off script because the PowerPoint was prepared before the staff report came out. So I'm going to summarize a couple of things. On neighborhood compatibility, this commercial use, industrial use, it's incompatible with a historic, established residential neighborhood for the Placer County General Plan and the OFER Community Plan. The comparable projects, the project on slide nine, I guess the numbering was different, on Pleasant Hill Road, it's in a remote area in Lincoln. It's down a driveway, a quarter mile off a county maintained road. The AT&amp;T project is front and center on Millertown. Regarding aesthetics, we're experts in the character of our neighborhood, architects, there's a world-renowned sculptor. We have a good design sense, and these are not subjective opinions. Case law suggests that we are experts by the virtue of our long-term, unique experience in the community. And it's a fact that cell towers are not beautiful. There are errors in the record. The visual simulations are inaccurate. The planning commission relied on inaccurate graphics, as are in the package today. The tower height is wrong. The vegetation along Millertown has been removed, and more trees will die through grading than are depicted. There's lack of transparency and inconsistent engagement by the MAC. There was a project two years ago sponsored by Epic, and it went through the MAC process in OFER. This AT&amp;T project was developed in a black box without community input, like the Verizon project had the benefit of. Epic AT&amp;T is developing the alternatives and the statement of need assertions without dialogue. It's a bit of a fox in the henhouse coming up with those conclusions. Regarding need, we have AT&amp;T in the neighborhood. It works fine. How do you measure success? What is adequate coverage? Is it internet to every corner of every structure within two miles? There's no objective dialogue. The desire to optimize coverage does not justify precedent-setting by damaging the fabric of a historic neighborhood forever. Regarding alternatives, similarly, there was no transparent process, no detailed feasibility analysis of alternatives, as is required by the FCC. Slide 12, whatever number that was, pointed out the three locations they tried to negotiate. I understand they also looked at some ideas the neighbor had, but there was no really quantitative discussion about why this is the best place. Is this the only place in the universe a tower can go to serve that need? And this is inconsistent with the character and development of the neighborhood. It's not the least intrusive site to fill this gap, as is required by the zoning ordinance. We think they may be segmenting, or whatever the other word is. You know, we think they're segmenting the project. Staff has talked about building our grading permit to define the encroachment onto the road, the grading, the tree removal impacts. These improvements have not been quantified, steadied, or disclosed through the environmental review process. Now, I want to share that OFER is a very old place. North Ravine created an ideal place for native people to live and prosper. And the town of OFER was a bustling place during the Gold Rush. There are 12 mining claims on Millertown Road alone. We talked about Crystal Springs Resort that drew people from Sacramento and beyond in the 20s. People hold on to these properties because they're special. You know, 40 to 50 years is common. Some new families move in because they want to raise their kids in a rural environment and attend OFER school, where my dad started in 1930. With its connection to native and Gold Rush history, it's truly a unique place. The county celebrates it through its museums division and the promotion of historic tourism. You know, it's authentic. It's the real McCoy. It deserves to be protected for future generations to enjoy. As long-term residents, and therefore experts in the character of the community, we can unanimously certify the proposed project is inconsistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood and contrary to its orderly development. You know, like was mentioned, the October 17th, 2019, the ZA couldn't make the findings for consistency. This location is detrimental. It's striking that commercial property exists 1,000 feet away along OFER Road. And two years prior to this ZA hearing, Epic Wireless presented a Verizon tower at the OFER MAC, less than a mile away, in similar terrain. For that project, they were preparing a mitigated neg deck. And after that heated MAC hearing, Epic and Verizon began considering alternate locations. Epic is now the applicant for the AT&amp;T project. There was no MAC hearing this time, and it's being processed as a categorical exemption. We find this an unacceptable inconsistency, inconsistency, and it demonstrates a lack of transparency. The zoning chapter states the intent to minimize adverse impacts by limiting the location of towers. It requires antennae to not be visually obtrusive. And the note at the bottom refers to the inaccurate visual simulation I mentioned in the beginning. The zoning ordinance permits adding 20 feet to that height without further public hearing or input. So the 108-foot tower was not simulated for this hearing, the planning commission, and there's speculation on federal legislation that could raise it an additional 30 feet. So we've talked quite a bit about traffic concerns. You know, staff did a great job meeting with us and evaluating the traffic volume. We have concerns. And there's also the applicant's unenforceable assertion of maintenance access frequency. We don't know how many people are going to be there. We don't know how frequently and when the vehicles are coming out. The red dot shows a rock outcrop. That's a real physical issue. It's a visual obstruction. Cars and bikes fly down the hill to the right. The topography makes it impossible to construct a standard Plate 116. There's a 30-foot elevation rise between the driveway entrance and the project site, all requiring significant grading. You know, and staff talked about analysis in the future to address impacts, but the cubic yards of cut and fill have not been calculated or steadied in the CADAx. So it's segmenting that project and making future evaluation necessary. Again, the CADAx is inadequate. The Verizon project would have looked at a mitigated neg deck, same terrain, less than a mile away. For AT&amp;T, they didn't go through the initial stay checklist to concretely evaluate significant effects, which are not adequately addressed in the project description, nor in the conditions of approval, which could support a CADAx. On the inaccurate visual simulations, like I said, there's significant grading required to cut a road through the existing farm gate, which is not a driveway as purported. You can see the existing condition on the right. It's going to impact the drip lines of those yellow highlighted trees. And I believe it's the tree ordinance that requires they be deemed removed with their drip lines being impacted. That's going to open up the view, it's going to make an unobstructive view of the tower and the enclosure from Millertown. This condition wasn't modeled by the applicant. The inset graphic was done by our neighbor. And the project description states, "The dense foliage will naturally stealth the fenced compound from the public right-of-way and nearby dwellings." And the photo simulations are inaccurate. The graphic I passed around and, and this, this visual, it's a picture I took a couple of days ago, and it shows he's done a lot of fuels work, and the tower enclosure is going to be front and center. It's not going to be screened as the project description states. Per case law, sorry. Per case law, our neighbors possess collective expertise about the aesthetic character of the community. We find the proposal has unmitigable aesthetic impacts, and it's not a subjective opinion, as described in the staff report. With the understory removed, the tower will be front and center, and it won't be pretty. Would anybody describe a tower as aesthetically appealing? And the right half of the slide, just real quickly, shows the RF clearance was based on an inaccurate tower location, which leads me to believe the project does not comply with FCC regulations, which would affect the county's ability to apply. The yellow dot shows where the tower is proposed. The blue dot shows where the steady was modeled. So by that inaccuracy, the tower is now several hundred feet closer to residents who are concerned about the possibility of future 5G service and the health effects associated with that, just an aside. This view is from a neighbor to the north. It was taken on a windy day when the applicant came out and flew a balloon. It was a windy day, so 88 feet isn't entirely accurate. That tower would be more visible with the tree death and removal through the grading impacts. There are 27-year neighbors who are experts in the character of their neighborhood, and they find this aesthetic impact out of character with the community and unacceptable. And talking really fast, sorry. It's also the neighbors on the surrounding hills, Hoppy Lane, Bonnie Lane, Suede Ranch Road, who've looked, who would look down on the site, and they've also signed the petition that we'll give you a little bit later. There are hundreds of cyclists. Each Saturday, we hear them talking to each other as they go down the road. The BikeWay Master Plan designates Millertown as a rural route. It's well-known in the cycling community. It's defined as a scenic route in that plan. It defines a key aspect of the goals of the plan, providing a comfortable, low-stress experience. And we believe the tower would be contrary to that goal, given its visibility along Millertown. Long-distance runners come to train on the hills. People walk their dogs, organize runs like the Mander Run, use it as a quiet stretch of their routes. The project would be detrimental to the people residing or working in the neighborhood, and it would change the character of the neighborhood forever. It would have an adverse effect on adjacent or surrounding property owners. And in 1983, the county had the foresight to give OFER its own community plan. They called it a general plan back then, recognizing that it's a, it's a special, authentic place which must be protected. To illustrate this, Policy 2, it discourages the expansion of public services, and we contend Millertown has significant values, rural open space. Policy 3 says urban development would detract from the existing character of the rural neighborhood. Now, some of this nomenclature is a bit off, but 40 years on, no one foresaw cell towers disguised as trees. This community plan text is intended to address uses that are out of character, those commercial or industrial uses like a tower, which is why we make these examples. The Policy 1 in the OFER community plan talks about retaining commercial in present areas, which 40 years on directs cell tower development along OFER Road. Similarly, the compatibility requirement in Policy 4 tests placing a tower in an established historic neighborhood. The proposed project fails on all these tests. It's inconsistent with the plan. This slide depicts the large swaths of commercial and industrial zone property beginning 1,000 feet to the south. Alternatives clearly exist. And I mentioned the Verizon project, Wise and Bald Hill, with Epic again as the applicant team. I attended the OFER MAC September 21st, 2017, and I expressed a willingness to be involved, and I still am. And I expressed that today. I want to be part of the solution to find an appropriate site. That MAC meeting was filled with detractors, and Epic, Verizon looked for other sites, including the fire station at Crater Hill and Wise. Two Septembers later, Epic is back with AT&amp;T. We had the first ZA hearing in September of 19. That time, there was no MAC presentation for this project. The ZA notice was the first the property owners heard about the project. It was before COVID when the MACs were still meeting. And I understand MAC hearings are not mandatory for minor use permits, but the county received AT&amp;T's application July 12th, two months prior to the ZA hearing. Why was this Epic AT&amp;T project not presented to the MAC like the Epic Verizon project just two years prior? Some of my neighbors have expressed a curiosity if it's the MAC reaction that Epic received with Verizon. This is not transparent. It highlights inconsistency in the handling of cell tower applications. To have presented this at a MAC hearing before the first ZA would have saved us all considerable time, money, and effort. However, again, at that ZA hearing, I reiterated my interest to help with the community process to find the correct location for this use, similar to the multi-generational or shelter site selection processes we ran at the county. To find a better location for a potentially taller tower and a larger yard, which could support expanded cellular services and agency or county telecom uses. We all recognize the need for connectivity. The Millertown residents are educated and forward-thinking people. We're passionate about history, and we take issue with the proposed location. This slide illustrates the character of the OFER Road development. The applicant has not met the burden of proof that all other properties in the area are unsuitable, and that conflicts with requirements of the Federal Telecommunications Act, Section 332. This graphic shows two existing towers, one at the 193 Parkinright on Highway 80, one above Nevada Street at the New Cemetery. Those are on the periphery of residential neighborhoods appropriately. The proposed location puts the incompatible use in the heart of an established historic residential neighborhood. We researched AT&amp;T's websites. We talked with reps at FIRSTNET. They said adequate coverage exists. Like I said at the beginning, how do you measure success? AT&amp;T developed this project in a black box without a transparent community process. There is no demonstrated need to put it in this community. Is this the only place in the universe for this tower? This slide lists a number of topics I've covered. Regarding noise, though, we live in a quiet place. That's why many people move there. During the public safety power shut-off or emergency events, the generator can run exempt from the noise ordinance. We had three in five-day power safety shut-offs in the last couple of years. It's a lot of, lot of generator time. On property values, there's now a requirement to disclose cell towers in the proximity to your home, which could mean 20%, however much discount. In summary, we request you deny this project and grant our appeal. Concerning is the inconsistent MAC vetting and the lack of county transparency in handling the Epic, ATT, Verizon projects. I'll again highlight two of our points, the inconsistency with the community plan, the project's detriment to the neighborhood, and the adverse effect on surrounding properties. Also, we believe the property is inconsistent with the zoning ordinance, as it would create adverse noise, access, and grading problems. It's, it's truly about the character of the place. As I painted at the beginning, this is a special place, an old place that must be protected. We contend there's a significant effect on the surrounding environment and this scenic rural route. Talking with my neighbors, many who have lived here 40 or 50 years, one recalled a similar situation when the community came together. At that time, it was the Highway 49 bypass, a traffic calming project that would have funneled significant, whose western alignment would have funneled significant traffic, traffic down a widened and improved Millertown Road. One neighbor even found her letter to the board dated September 3rd, 1987, and she made an appeal on behalf of nature. Many of the points were incorporated in the letter your board received about the AT&amp;T proposal. This is a community that believes in its character, which is why we respectfully request that you grant our appeal. Thank you for your time, and as I mentioned, others may use their time to elaborate on points I've made.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Any questions, or Mark, by the board? See none at this time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know if you disinfect these now.
Is there someone from here, proponent of the cell tower itself, to make a presentation? Bennett or... Yep, okay. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hello, Chair, Board Supervisors. My name is Jared Kersley. On behalf of the applicant, AT&amp;T. We also have here the external affairs representative with AT&amp;T, Brian Malesy, who would like to also present after I am completed here. Bennett with staff did an excellent job summarizing the project in general. I'm sure there's many questions that I could help answer based on the appellant's presentation. I would first like to give some additional summary of the project. In terms of finding alternative sites, we believe we did an a job that, we did identify all possible sites that could house a wireless telecommunications facility while taking into consideration all variables that require, that go into deciding what property is actually suitable and what properties are not. We first started up on Star Thistle Lane, which is a private driveway road that goes up to three different properties. And we talked to all three different properties. We received two interested property owners who would be interested in leasing space to AT&amp;T for a self-cell tower, while the third was on the fence for a while. And then they ultimately decided, no, we don't want this. There's possible health risks, so we don't want to even entertain the idea of leasing space to AT&amp;T. So the, what was the primary candidate, Mr. Vander Walker, I believe, he was going to go for the project, and we were going to work through the process. But then he decided to back out of the application. He was no, not under any lease terms obligations to fulfill, so he had the right to back out of the obligation. And additionally, there would have been issues because this was a shared private driveway. The easement rights that were on those, that Star Thistle Lane were not transferable easement rights to AT&amp;T, a commercial entity. So rural state rights wouldn't have worked anyways, even if we would have gone through with the permit. So we went back to the drawing board and selected the 545 Millertown Road. There are other properties that we looked into on a, in a term of like a desktop analysis that we do. Again, if it's off a private road, we, if we can't get there legally, then it's not going to be a viable candidate. We struck out one time with Star Thistle Lane. We weren't going to strike out again on private property, private driveways. And then a lot of the other owners, property owners, properties were either too close to neighboring parcels, setbacks wouldn't work, maybe there's not viable space on neighboring parcels, setbacks wouldn't work, maybe there's not viable space on their property. So to us, they're not even an alternate site because they're just not viable. So after Millertown Road, 545 Millertown Road was the primary candidate, we moved forward, applied for the zoning application. And mind you, the area that we are looking in is a designated area that AT&amp;T radio frequency engineers have defined as a need of, need to service a filled, a coverage gap in the area. In order to fill that coverage gap, a site needs to go in a circle, and that is an oval was placed earlier on in terms of what our search criteria was. And once Millertown Road was moved forward, we provided photo simulations, we were providing a hundred, proposing a hundred and twenty-foot monopine tower. We, of course, as been expressed earlier, agreed to reduce it down to eighty feet, losing some coverage and capacity for the area. However, AT&amp;T is, sounds, they are, they do care about the neighbors, they do care about the aesthetics, aesthetic impact, so they did agree to move down in terms of height in order to keep the site going forward and provide the coverage that is needed. During the hearing and the whole process, yes, five additional sites were provided to us, and they're all outside the area that we were given by AT&amp;T's design engineer. However, we still looked into all of the five areas as potential alternative sites. And there's a Pijony Station, there is a sewage plant, there was the water facility, fire station, and the quarry, apologize, that is actually about a mile and a third southwest, which already houses a AT&amp;T site. So the problems that we ran into in order was the fire station. Fire station is a mile and a half northwest from 545 Millertown Road, from our subject area, and it's too far to the northwest, so far that it's actually, could be considered as an additional site, not an alternative site. And I have correspondence with me today from the RF engineer from months ago that states this, this fire station at these coordinates is, is an additional site, it's not a replacement site. In terms of the quarry, again, we have a site already there, wouldn't work. In terms of the treatment plant, it's too close to the quarry, it's in a little bowl, it's not as high as elevation, but again, it's too close to the quarry. When you have two cell sites close to each other on the same carrier, it just messes up the coverage. It's, like, for lack of a better word, it steals coverage, it just causes issues with the, the design and the capabilities of the actual coverage for the cell phones. In terms of moving the site to the Pijony Tower, again, that's a bowl, you can't place a cell site in a low elevated bowl, it's just not practical, doesn't work. So, yeah, define an alternative site analysis, we believe we provided that to, to what Placer County requires. To the extent that if Millertown Road doesn't get approved, likely there's no, there is no alternative, I shouldn't say the word likely, there's no alternative to place another tower in this precise area of Ofor, to fill the gap on Highway 80 that encroaches into Millertown, and then also a little bit to the north, northeast. As we looked on the coverage map, it's identified as a gap in coverage, and this site is strategically placed right in the middle of the site up to the northeast and southwest, and to fill the gap that is needed. Again, the, this site is primary, primarily chosen for two reasons: to fill a LTE gap in coverage, and also to provide fixed wireless internet, high-speed broadband internet via wireless signal to homes in this area of Ofor, and because there may be satellite or mom-and-pop internet available, or maybe another carrier works okay. This is identified as an AT&amp;T gap in coverage, and other carriers, other providers cannot be taken into consideration while considering AT&amp;T's gap in coverage because it's, it'd be prohibiting services on one precise carrier. So, we hear people's concerns, you know, how do you define aesthetical impact, visual impacts? I mean, I think we all could have our different definitions of that. It's rather subjective, in my opinion. I have a cellphone tower not too far from my house, I don't think it's impactful to me, but again, apples and oranges, I get it. What we like to go by in aesthetical impacts is how many folks will be truly impacted while driving down public rideways. CEQA takes into consideration public vantage points, not typically private vantage points such as backyards, front yards, and so on and so forth. However, we agree to take photo simulation, photoshops from vantage points, whether these folks wanted it in their front patio, backyard, anywhere, anywhere they chose. Unfortunately, we only got one vantage point from someone's backyard. That's where someone said we could see the balloon. That's why you don't, for that reason, you don't see any other photo simulation from the front porch where people enjoy their property. Instead, you see photo simulations from one backyard and, and the public roadway, that's it. So it's not impactful to folks, front yards where they enjoy their coffee in the morning on the porch. And that's what we really like to focus on when we're discussing, is this impactful to folks in this room? My own time?
If you have a couple more things.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think frequencies of visits got brought up in terms of how many times do carriers visit because of the encroachment. This is an existing encroachment that the property owners use to park their vehicles and drive into their property, but typically, carriers will visit a site maybe once a month, once a quarter, very infrequent. They used to visit more frequently when they'd have to climb the tower or get up on the tower to maybe change the angle of an antenna. All that stuff is done remotely now, through their national, you know, Texas headquarters, if you will, because all the antennas are remotely operated with a motor. So there's a lot less reasons to actually go to the site and modify it. Every once in a while, there's technology changes, that means that maybe an antenna needs to be swapped off the tower for another antenna, maybe a equipment cabinet needs to be swapped out inside the shelter, so on and so forth. But in general, we use a rule of thumb, tower visits are usually once a month at the most, and once a quarter is more typical. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I'm sure I left out some responses to the appellant's presentation, but I'm here for you.
Any questions of board members at this time? Cindy?
Thank you. Did you share the RF, complete RF study with our county staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I would like to add that the RF report results are a fraction of the threshold. So, and when a site is at a hundred percent of the threshold, that means it's going to be in compliant. Our site is right around the three percent of the threshold, so if this report was off by twenty feet or what have you, which it won't be, it's per federal requirements that they have to be very precise based on the 1A letter that the surveyor provides where the tower's located, everything has to drive. But if this report was off by fifty feet or thirty feet or what have you, it is not, we could place this tower next to my house, your house, anyone's house, and it's going to pass with flying colors because of the height. When a tower's that high, radiation from the antennas goes straight out like this, very, very small down tilt, so maybe down tilt very, very mildly, not like this. So basically, the radio waves go out into the horizon, your cellphone, it's very smart, it picks up the waves from the, from the sky. And actually, fun fact is, your cellphone, when it's, when you're using it, will provide more radiation than standing underneath the tower. I've had this tested before for a property owner who wanted a cell tower on their property, and the wife was a little uneasy about it, didn't know. We provided the electrical engineer study that showed, hey, this is a little bit more, for lack of a better, risky than standing underneath a cell tower. So, again, that EME report, it's going to pass easily under the FCC thresholds, regardless if it's off by a few feet.
Cindy, just more?
Yeah, one other follow-up. On the coverage gap, having met with the neighbors, and they've assured me they don't feel there's a coverage gap right there, was the work that was done to identify the coverage gap shared with our staff as well? Do we?
Yes, it was.
Do we have the availability to analyze that coverage gap and validate it?
Yes, so we provide a coverage, a coverage map simulation that AT&amp;T radio frequency engineers produce using their software, internal software programs. So they use very sophisticated programs that can detect when people drop calls, when the signal's low, all this, these variables that go into placing a site. So when, let me back up, it's very common also that where the site's placed does actually have some cellphone coverage. Because cellphone towers need to be on higher grounds, they usually get trickle-in coverage in that area. So that's a common thing we hear is, well, this, where this tower's placed, we have coverage. Well, sure, it may be because, maybe it's because it's on higher ground, but all these other areas around it that aren't on higher ground don't have good coverage. So that's why it has to be placed on higher ground to get to low areas. So sometimes it is the case that coverage does exist on higher grounds where cell towers exist.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Suzanne?
Yes, hi, thank you for your presentation. I'm curious, are there other cell tower providers, cell providers in that area? AT&amp;T?
In this precise area that we are looking for, there are no carriers located for a co-location opportunity, if that helps answer your question.
Well, I'm not looking for a co-location opportunity, I'm looking for coverage by other cell providers that could be providing that coverage that people are saying they don't feel there is a gap in service.
So if it was done, if there's a site by another carrier such as Verizon or T-Mobile, that wouldn't go into our coverage maps because it's a different provider, but it's possible that there's another tower in the vicinity, but from my recollection, then actually, the nearest sites are the existing AT&amp;T adjacent sites.
Okay, because I'm wondering what could explain the fact that I did visit also, and the neighbors are saying that they're, they don't seem to have a gap in cell coverage, they're not dropping calls and so forth, so I'm wondering what's providing their cell coverage now currently, when you're saying that there are obvious cell gaps and you have information and data that calls are being dropped?
Yeah, so the gaps, the main, can I go back, Bennett, can we go back to the coverage map? Is that possible, or how do I work? This one? Okay. Basically, what I'm going to show you is where the proposed site is, there is some outdoor coverage there, and that's what the folks are likely talking about. Again, we're trying to place them on high grounds where they get trickle-in coverage. Likely, it's coming from the adjacent site that's on higher ground to the northeast, off of Mount Vernon and Cottonwood. So that's, that's the Millertown area, 545 Millertown. See how it has in-transient service? It's actually not too bad. It's all this other area that we're trying to fill a gap on, even this corridor of 80 right here. So this whole area is looking to fill a gap. So it happens, like I said, it happens often where, where a cell tower is being placed, there's trickle-in coverage from this site, and possibly from this site, and that's where it's coming from. So then we can switch there, and now it all turns, highlights green, even the gap in coverage down here that was existing.
Okay, then let me ask you one follow-up. According to our report here, it says that the provider must show a significant gap in service coverage. So how do you do that? How do you prove a significant, just by that?
Via map, yeah, via coverage maps.
Do you have coverage maps for the other providers besides?
We can't provide that, and each carrier has to be, each provider has to be treated differently.
Right.
If, for instance, if Verizon was right here and provided coverage here, and they all have coverage, that doesn't allow the jurisdiction, local jurisdictions to prohibit AT&amp;T in this case to, to come in this area. They'd, of course, would have to show why they couldn't co-locate on that nearby Verizon site hypothetically speaking. In this case, there is no alternative site, the two nearest sites are AT&amp;T sites, and we're, we're going right smack in the middle of both of them to fill this whole gap.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I see no other questions at this time.
Okay, can I invite Brian Malesy up at this time to talk about FirstNet, or has the time run out?
Very briefly, you...
He could go on public comment if that works.
Okay, good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so now I will open it up to the public. Generally, there'll be three minutes allocated for public comment by any individual who wants to come up, and so if you'd like to do that, please just come forward and state your name for the record.
Robert, James, ladies. My name is Jack Sanchez, I was born in home, at home in Ofor, and went to Ofor Elementary School, owned three homes, several properties in Ofor, so my father, grandfather came from Duck Pond, Tennessee to Ofor in the eighteen-seventh, Jim knows all of it. Anyway, we're Oforites, and I'm really concerned about what's going on in Ofor, especially Millertown, because Millertown has the North Ravine, four and a half miles of prime restoration, steelhead habitat, endangered steelhead, we're not doing a very good job of keeping our wildlife here in California, and we're restoring all of, all of North Ravine, which flows right through Millertown, into the Auburn Ravine, and it's the major tributary of the Auburn Ravine. So I really have concern about this cell tower. And I think there's much more concern about the radiation that goes off a cell tower than was indicated by the last speaker. If you just go on Google and look at negative effects of cell towers, it's just unbelievable amount of information there. California is so far behind Oregon and Washington in protecting wildlife, especially fishes and most wildlife, that we may never catch up. So any negative that goes ahead that, against that restoration is noteworthy. Placer County is now continuing to destroy vernal pools in our fish by allowing companies like Carvana in Placer Ranch, whose runoff pollute Pleasant Grove, and Orchard Creeks, both of which are Auburn Ravine tributaries, and they're our main source of the threatened salmon and steelhead here in Placer County. So we have a long way to go to preserve these animals. There's growing evidence that our addiction to cell phones could be impacting brain functionality and be the cause of stress, anxiety, insomnia, and a lack of attention and focus. Now, a new report has found that we were not only living things, we're not the only living things to be affected by our increasing dependence on wireless technology. Mammals, birds, fish, and even plants are likely being... Mammals, birds, fish, and even plants are likely being harmed by the electromagnetic radiation from cell towers emanating from Wi-Fi, cellphone towers, broadcast transmitters, and other power lines. It has been documented that wildlife affects upon, uh, after cell towers reconstructed, including nests and site abandonment, plumage deterioration, locomotion problems, and death in-house. Uh, I really want you to seriously consider the damage that can be done to the wildlife and the people in Ofer, which is a paradise, as we all know, by this cell tower. I urge you to not allow this cell tower. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
You guys aren't wearing masks.
You're good with that here.
All right, I'm Maria Biernowski, um, inherited 540 Millertown Road, which is the, um, Crystal Springs Resort. Um, family was there for decades. This is more than a cell tower project. It's about maintaining our sense of place. Uh, what are we leaving to the seventh generation? We need to consider these things. The ZA got it right. There's two issues, and I'm gonna read one. MUP requirements require a project to be consistent with the neighborhood character, not be contrary to the neighborhood's orderly development, and not cause any adverse effects of daily use and enjoyment on the adjacent neighbors. That's really clear, and it is affecting us. Secondly, the Federal Communications Act of 96, the courts found an effective prohibition exists when a wireless provider has a significant gap, which I'm not sure is proved today, and proposes the least intrusive means to fill that gap. Um, I haven't seen that here today either. This is a special place. Ofer is very special, and the subject property begins with being located on the North Auburn Ravine, where native people flourished. Um, there's, there's cultural sites up and down Millertown that nobody knows about. There's some even at my house. Um, mining, the overload mining, the quartz mining along Millertown Road is profoundly important. There's like 14 mining claims in half a mile stretch, one of which is on that property. Um, post-mining immigrant settlement. Um, this family is one of those families. After mining, the immigrants who came through, mined, um, had to move on. And so what did they do? They created a community. They created farming, orchards, ranching. Um, this family in particular then created leisure. That farming and ranching kind of fell off, and then leisure was created with the, um, Crystal Springs Resort. People came from Sacramento by train up Old Highway 40 in their horseless carriage and enjoyed the day right there. It's an important property. The project is highly intrusive. Um, firstly, the access road. Uh, even though we showed drawings about the access road, it was the Epix-based drawing, and we simply highlighted the trees that the tree, that the road was intersecting. It is going to obliterate the native oaks. There's no doubt. Uh, it removes character-defining features such as rockout croppings, which are everywhere. Uh, the, uh, tower starts at a 30-foot elevation. It goes up 90 feet. It can go up 20 more feet, which is 140 feet of a plastic tree with an unobstructed view from Millertown Road. There's the equipment, uh, compound, another gem. Concrete block walls, noisy generators, humming HVAC, fences, gates, signage, emergency lighting, and the flow of service vehicles. That becomes our life. In my view, as I exit my driveway, it is front and centered. AT&amp;T has not done their due diligence. They should engage their contractors, find a parking lot. There's Ofer Road, there's, there's acres and acres of commercial and industrial zones along Ofer Road at the exact same elevation. In fact, it's 45 feet higher than the proposed site. Um, there's, that's 1,500 feet away. There's municipal and special district land 800 feet away at the same elevation. This is not the right place. Please deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ciara George, and I live at 677 Millertown Road, right next door to the proposed site. And first of all, I want to thank all of you for coming out to the proposed site and seeing for yourselves our beautiful community. You walked out onto our property, and you could see a huge impact that this tower would have not only have on our lives, but in the lives of our whole area. As you took a walk with us to see Millertown Road and how this tower and driveway would have such a negative impact on our road, thank you again all for coming out. Ofer area has a rural, unique feeling. It's amazing place to live. There is not one person within a two-mile radius, and we made a map of all the petitioners and all the people that are against this tower, and not one of them within the two-mile radius would want to have this tower in their area. I have over 56 signatures. We have a Facebook page that has over 40 members, and again, the map showing everybody that's opposed to this tower. It's not the place to put it. I know you've got many letters and arguments that do state why this tower should not be built on Millertown Road, and I won't go over all those again. So, um, but I want to just quickly remind you that AT&amp;T does say that there's a coverage gap. And as we have gone over and I showed you again when you guys visited, they've shown it as well. There is no coverage gap. All of the blue is 4G and 5G, according to this map. As well as FirstNet, which really hasn't been covered much yet. But again, FirstNet, all in blue, full coverage. Even towers all the way out, 49 and 80 up to Grass Valley. So again, there is no coverage gap that is necessary. So we say that this possible 108-foot tower is not compatible with the health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of why cell towers do not belong in rural residential areas. It is inconsistent with the character and would have adverse effects on all of the neighbors. So please approve our denial, I mean, please, please approve our appeal and deny the project. Thank you very much, and I would like to give the petitions, if I can, to them.
And, excuse me, I think we have a question. If you would be willing to, yeah, Cindy?
I, I apologize. I just need to clarify, your statement was that no one within two miles wants the tower anywhere within two miles, or just at this site? I wanted to clarify that.
Well, the site, what it's showing is, AT&amp;T has said that it will cover for two miles around, and that's the coverage that they're proposing. And we have not found one person within that area that is wanting to have the tower.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And most people do have AT&amp;T, by the way, and we can do a show of hands if necessary. Thank you. Uh-huh. Any other questions?
Nope, doesn't look like it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Gail Rideout. Uh, we live at the corner of Dutchman's Mine in Millertown, three houses down. I had a prepared statement, but then everybody's already said everything except for one small part, which is, and I also, uh, listened to the presentation from AT&amp;T, which said there were no other pictures of people, and so it wouldn't really be able to be seen from anywhere else, because we only had one picture of a yard with a balloon. The balloon did not float for more than half a day. Most of the neighbors were not notified that the balloon was floating. We would have taken pictures from each of our yards that made sense. Um, we've been shown examples of other cell towers in what are deemed similar areas to our own. These towers are being held up in an attempt to set a precedent for neighborhood placement. It is a real concern that allowing this highly visible industrial structure into our historic agricultural residential area sets further precedent for industrial encroachment into the historic areas throughout Placer County, not just our Millertown Road. Because when you can take a picture of some random tower and then tell me that we should be able to have that in our neighborhood because somebody else has it in theirs, that's a precedent that we don't want to scent in a historic area, and that's why we're in Placer County, why we're in Auburn, and we love it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any more speakers? Please, please come forward, and don't be shy. We'll, we'll be here for a while, so.
Hi, Ciara, uh, my name is Bryant Malasi. I'm, uh, the External Affairs Manager for AT&amp;T. Um, in our conversations with Placer County officials over the last few years, uh, they have consistently been asking us to address three concerns for the county. What are you doing to bring more wireless connectivity to the residents and families of Placer County? What are you doing to bring broadband to our homes and communities, especially in the more rural areas of the county? And how are you supporting the coun- the county's public safety agencies in responding to emergency events such as wildfires or PG&E's PSS events? Regarding broadband access, which I know is of a high concern for the county, uh, this, this site is part of the FCC's Connect America program, started in 2014. The FCC identified census block areas across the country where connectivity was being underserved, um, and there is also lack of internet options. Many of these are rural areas. Uh, there's a few in Placer County, along Highway 80, and in the Ofer area. Um, and this is the site we're addressing today. Um, eight, the type of broadband access we'll be providing is AT&amp;T's fixed wireless internet. Uh, it provides a line of site connection to homes from the wireless site, so homes need to be visible towards the wireless site. Um, and then I know probably some areas, some homes have DSL coverage, and maybe some local providers. Um, this is a step up from DSL. Um, I know at this moment, we're not planning on providing residential fiber to this rural area, um, so this would be a main option from AT&amp;T for broadband service. Uh, regarding FirstNet, uh, FirstNet was, um, created in 2012 in response to the 9/11 attacks. Uh, you, Congress created an independent agency called the First Responder Network Authority, uh, which its responsibility was to build out a separate, uh, public, public safety communication system throughout the country. Um, in California, due to the wildfires, AT&amp;T through FirstNet has been working in close cooperation with state public agencies like CalOES and local agencies to build out the communications network. For Placer County, we're currently under construction at the Auburn Airport for a FirstNet priority site that will support FirstNet, first responders in that area, as well as the CHP air operations teams. Uh, we're also building out the network in the Tahoe area, around the Tahoe Basin and Tahoe Vista, and working with the local, uh, fire departments there on that site. Uh, while there have been communication system, public, while there have been communication systems, safety agencies have been using, um, from other carriers, this acts as additional communication option and resource during emergency events. We saw this last summer during the record fire season. Uh, different first responder agencies would use both Verizon and AT&amp;T during emergency response situations. Um, and then also internally, our AT&amp;T, uh, network operations teams track wildfires 24/7. Um, so we're closely working with the local fire, uh, responding agencies to make sure, uh, the communities in Placer County and the surrounding California communities are staying connected during wildfires or PG&E, PSS events. Uh, one last thing, uh, Placer County is home to many AT&amp;T employees, from retail to local technicians and network and field operation teams. We look forward to continuing investing in the county and expanding wireless and broadband connectivity to the residents going forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Cindy, you have a question?
Sorry, jumping in there.
Yes.
Thanks, and I, I do appreciate AT&amp;T's responsiveness on many fronts. Um, have you taken the neighbors up and met with them? Any of the ones that have volunteered to meet with you on looking at all?
We haven't done any town halls. Uh, we, we have, uh, worked with the county staff and worked with the recommendations on site analysis throughout the last couple of years on seeing if there's any of the sites that they recommended that could work. Uh, Jared mentioned, we went through that process with our RF engineers. Um, we obviously are open to communication throughout these processes with residents. Um, so for other sites as well, um, we're always open to, and for myself, I'm always open to talking with residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker.
Hey, my name is Deborah Polanski, and I live at 1415 Bald Hill Road, um, just on the corner of Weiss and Bald Hill. Um, one of the things that I would like to say is that we are on the AT&amp;T network for, uh, receiving warnings about fire and power outage, and I always get those on my cellphone. It's not an issue, uh, where, where I am. So the other, uh, part, um, of the DSL line, um, I would have to say that in terms of, um, consumer satisfaction, it's always people talking on, uh, Nextdoor about how AT&amp;T is not fulfilling its obligations and its speeds. So that, that's just one thing I, that I'd like to let you know. Um, the other is that, uh, as you know, that Ofer is a, is a rural area, and we have a specific, uh, environment that has a lot of trees, a lot of plants, and it's, people refer to it as the, kind of the Greenwood of Auburn. And this, this tower is, um, a mega eyesore. And driving past it, it puts it like this huge industrial thing right in the middle of Ofer, and it really doesn't fit. And I can't understand why there's all of that real estate on Ofer Road, and especially hearing that it's the same elevation, why they can't put some kind of tower like that over by the freeway where it fits in? And, and not in the middle of Ofer, in the middle of all these big oaks and, um, that have been there a long time, and it's a residential district. And it's just darn ugly. It's just about as ugly as you can get. And people have taken care of the environment, and I'm sure it will affect property values to put something like that in the middle of Ofer. So, um, find another place. Uh, there's plenty of big hills where nobody's gonna see it. Put it up there, put it over by the freeway. Don't stick it in the middle of Ofer, where everybody's driving by on Weiss Road, and especially, uh, Sweet Little Creek, the, uh, North Auburn Ravine, and all of the environment that people have been taking care of. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. No one else wants to speak here? And there is no one on Zoom? Uh, well, please come forward and state your name for the record.
I'm Holly Thomason. I live on Weiss Road, and according to the map, from what I can understand, my property was in blue, but we have complete cell service through AT&amp;T, perfect streaming, um, I don't understand the map. Um, also, just this morning, took a picture in our tallest tree, um, big, beautiful hawk nest right in the line where the radiation's gonna go out, as been it talked about. And, um, you know, we have a lot of hawks in the area, and I just, for the wildlife, I just don't see it as being a good thing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else before I close the public hearing? Now, we've got some Zoom. Five, okay, thanks. Please state your name for the record, yep?
David Cook. Uh, I live at 940 Bonnie Lane. Uh, so my home is just off Millertown, and, um, I, I take no consolation at the RF waves diving down. My elevation is above the tower. I could see the balloon the day they flew it. I can see right down into the site. And if the RF waves are shooting out sideways, then they're effectively shooting right into my picture window, um, which is actually on the back of my house, where I enjoy my property, not on the front porch. Okay? Um, we moved to this area from Rockland, because we're not interested in that type of, uh, environment for raising our kids. We think Ofer is a wonderful place. We think it should stay. I grew up in Auburn. It's changed a lot since I, uh, was raised here. Graduated from Colfax High School. I didn't really plan to speak, so I wore my Del Oro t-shirt today. Um, but I'd just like to say, 'cause I hadn't planned to speak, and I feel kind of emotional about this. But I'd just like to say, because I hadn't planned to speak, and I feel kind of emotional about this. I'm one of the younger people here fighting for this. We spent a lot of money to be here. To think that our value would be diminished by something that's so easily transitioned to another space is disappointing. So I hope you'll consider this with a lot of thought about how many people it will impact and how many generations down the road will have to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, I have a question for him.
For, for him? Excuse me, would you mind? There's a question on my colleague's.
I have a question for you. Since you're one of the younger ones and you have children, school-aged children, and so with COVID, you've probably been educating remotely at, at home. How is your internet for their educational purposes?
So we have had no problem with internet. We have multiple resources for internet and we use them all, including our AT&amp;T cell phones as hotspots with no problem. In fact, sometimes the AT&amp;T phone as a hotspot is better than the actual internet. All three of my kids are on the internet all day long. I can assure you when it goes down, I know it. We do not have a problem. We don't need it and we don't want it.
Thank you.
Just a personal comment on my part, but I hope your kids are back in school soon.
We're back.
Good. Okay, so a very calm crowd, not very, how many, are there any more people here who want to address the board? If, could you raise your hand? Okay, so we're good here. So, but we do have now, so we have some Zoom callers? Four?
Five.
Five? Okay.
Cody, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yes, hello. My name's Cody Taylor. I live on Millertown Road. I just have a little thing here. Millertown Road is a serene and rural residential area that has the Auburn Ravine winding through it. The ravine is protect, is a protected salmon habitat and home to an abundance of wildlife. It is a road that bikers use on a daily basis and community races have ran through for several years. It is a beautiful area with a native setting and one that Placer County should support its residents in preserving. As you know, this property is zoned for residential agriculture. The Placer County zoning ordinance provides the per, for the purpose and intent of the residential agriculture, the RA Zone District is to stabilize and protect the rural residential characteristics of the area to which it is applied and to promote and encourage a suitable environment for family life, including agriculture uses. Allowing a cell tower to be built in this location does not protect the rural residential characteristics of the area, but instead introduces aesthetic blight to a beautiful area. This will decrease property values due to the tower being unsightly structured. That is believed by many to cause potential health issues. We understand that you are not able to base your decision on the health effects this may have on the community and environment. As long as the tower complies with the FCC guidelines concerning RF emissions, however, one can easily find information online as to the health concerns that are raised by various experts and health issues that have occurred from these towers. We ask that the Board of Supervisors would consider and establish your authority in this matter. We are counting that is strong in our land conservation efforts. And as a government body, you should have the final say in the location of where these cell towers would be best constructed so that they provide an improved customer experience while also protecting and preserving the characteristics of the rural residential community. So please consider relocating to a commercial industrial area, one that seems more fitting for such a large project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Wright. I live at 690 Millertown Road. We've lived up here for about four years now. I just wanted to make everyone aware with, we have four children who were doing distance learning. We did not have any dial-up internet or DSL. What we used to stream our schooling was through our AT&amp;T phones. So I just wanted to point out that they're working adequately. If I was able to stream four different classrooms, four different Zoom meetings, five days a week for my children, I, I think that the need is not there. I don't think it is going to appeal to our neighborhood. It doesn't, it doesn't fit in and it doesn't belong here.
Hillary, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Okay, all right. Hello, welcome. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Hillary Clayder and I grew up at 1220 Millertown Road. My family moved to the area in 1978 from Los Angeles to get away from the concrete jungle and to have a moral, more rural lifestyle. My neighbors and I played in the creek, which runs behind our house. And as previous speakers have mentioned, that is a protected habitat. We, our neighbors have cows and goats. And we didn't have cable when MTV started. It didn't come down our road and that was perfectly fine because our families wanted a different lifestyle for us. I might have complained as a teen, but I understand and value the way I was raised. And a lot of people who are not present today, a lot of the older generation aren't actually using internet. They maybe didn't even know about this meeting or this issue until neighbors raised it. My own mom didn't realize that this was actually happening because she's, she doesn't care for things like Facebook and internet. She likes to sit in her backyard and watch the birds and the deer and the wild turkeys that come through and enjoy the natural landscape. It's very concerning, not only for a health perspective, but also how it would drastically change the neighborhood. When I drive home, when I turn onto Weiss, from Weiss Road to Millertown Road, that property brings me such joy. Growing up, they used to have an honor farm stand. And, you know, to think that it would go from a farm plot to an atrocious cell tower that would stand out and radiate and really impact not only our personal health, but the health of the birds. And, you know, Auburn is a bird sanctuary. And we really need to protect our environment. And the neighborhood really is, the people who moved there, moved there because they wanted to get away from it all and they want the peace and the quiet and the joy of the trees and the birds. And so thank you for considering and I hope that you will deny this project. It was already previously denied by zoning. And I think there is a lot of reasons that all these folks have already, already talked about. But I just want to say, there's a lot of people who aren't here, who can't be here, obviously, in the middle of the day. And so I would just say that most of the neighbors, all, all of the neighbors that I know of are against this project. Thank you very much.
Laura, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
My name is Laura Lindstad and I live at 10555 Weiss Road. So I'm very close to where the cell tower would be. I feel like it would very much impact the homes, the families, the residents, the properties and greatly depreciate the value of, of the property and all of the surrounding homes and properties. And it affects the whole community. Many walkers are on that road every day. I walk that road almost daily. And at this point, with a cell phone tower there, because of all that I know about and have read about the effects of it, I will no longer walk on Millertown. And I'm wondering about that for all of the other walkers and bikers, like has, have been stated. And the ill effects, which keeps being stated, to people, to the animals, to the environment, to a protected area, is, is huge. And in other cities and counties that I'm finding, I know in Mill Valley for sure, they are banning cell towers within the city limits and within their counties because of these kind of damaging effects to the community and to people's health and that there are better sites for them to be put. So please deny this project to be built on this property, on this site. Find an appropriate site for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Not very well. Could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, is that better?
Yep, yep, thanks.
Wonderful. My name is Shelley Moranville. I live at 10405 Dutchman's Mine Road. I am actually the furthest house on Dutchman Mine. And I'm in sort of a hole. You go downhill to get to my property. And I have very good cell service. I also homeschool the child this year as well. So I do have the ability to connect with no issues. And I think what's interesting is the, the one piece that we're not talking about, which is the peace and quiet of our serene and surroundings. When you think of, for example, I lived on Five Acres in Vacaville on 9/11 and I didn't realize how much noise came from Travis Air Force Base until 9/11 occurred. And that morning that I drove to work, not a single airplane was in the sky. And it was so quiet. And that's what I enjoy of my home today, is peace and quiet. I don't sit on my front porch. I don't think I've ever sat on my front porch. And I think that the person that says that is someone who doesn't actually live in the country because they don't understand what it's like. I sit in my backyard and I listen to the birds and I listen to the creek and I listen to the frogs. And that humming noise that's going to come from this cell, cell tower is going to take that away. And what's it going to do to the deer that walk down the road or the turkeys or the two peacocks that constantly are loose? Well, they're all going to be disturbed and bothered and moved out of the way for this construction of a site that no one in Ofer wants. I keep hearing AT&amp;T say multiple times that they are bringing service to the people of Ofer. But the people of Ofer are saying, we don't want this. And if you pull up a SPRINT map of the area, there is very extensive coverage. Very extensive. So this is a competitive thing. And I'm sorry that AT&amp;T didn't get in here sooner or before somebody else. But you've got a community of people who are saying, we don't want this and we don't need it. And so we're asking our county supervisors to vote no on this, on our behalf. This is passionate for the people of this area and this community. And I hope that you have witnessed that today and multiple times throughout this process because it is huge. And I'm very grateful that the AT&amp;T gentleman talked about multiple towers and how a signal will bounce between those. Because I had a gentleman in my hotel from AT&amp;T who said the same thing to me. But what he also said is if you're too close to a tower, it won't work. This is a ruse. This isn't what it is made out to be. And we're asking you to see that. And I thank you today and I apologize for not being able to be there presently. But I drive an hour from work every day to live in the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chance, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Chance Falcons. I work at the Law Office of Bridget Barnes &amp; Associates. I, our, our office had been working with the Millertown Road Group and I think they did an excellent job today explaining some of the issues. There is only two points that I want to bring up that I don't feel were necessarily addressed by staff in response to our appeal letter. We looked at the Verizon project very closely in, that had, had been worked through in 2017 and because of the close proximity to the current site for this project. And although the staff did distinguish in many ways the topography and other significant environmental impacts with the Verizon project, which staff did recommend a mitigated NIGDAC, one of the, one of the significant environmental impacts for that project was tribal resources. And they found in the 2017 Verizon project that mitigation measures would need to be put into place since in that project, there was going to be quite, quite a bit of digging and grading around the project. Now, in this project, it wasn't found necessary. But I would like to point out that in response to the Plate 116 issue, staff had recommended, since the current line of sight would not be, they wouldn't be able to comply with it, that the area would need to be graded or that the applicant would need to do, apply for a design exception request. Either that design exception request, you know, we don't know what that is going to entail if they do decide to come up with a different project structure for, to get around the Plate 116 issue or the grading of the property. We think, you know, first, that's going to have a significant environmental impact to taking out the trees and the massive rock structures that were described by Mark in the earlier appeal, applicant appeal PowerPoint. So we do think that, you know, there are significant environmental impacts to this project that need to be mitigated. There were plenty of them in the 2017 Verizon project. And in addition to that, we see staff's response of saying that they can apply for a design exception request and change how the driveway or the exit of the property will be as them deferring to, deferring and piecemealing the project instead of giving a full project explanation of how it's going to affect the environment.
Chairman, I see no further public comment.
Thanks. Time for Board members, further questions and/or comments in terms of clarifying any disparate views or information that we might make sure we understand everything. So Bonnie, start with you.
Thank you. A couple of questions, Bennett. So there was talk about this tower being 88 feet, but there's some sort of exemption that would allow AT&amp;T to extend it an additional 20 feet. Would you please address that? And is that something that would happen, could happen on this site?
Sure, I'll give you a basic rundown if counsel wants to speak in as well. But I believe the Federal Telecommunication Act allows for a provider to extend their towers either 20% or 10 feet, whichever is greater. So what that looks like in Placer County, they would have to come in and do a minor use modification. And from my understanding, it would still have to go to hearing. But I believe through federal law, they couldn't, it could not be denied. And I believe it could be conditioned.
It could not be denied. So
Correct.
Because of federal law, if it was placed here, AT&amp;T would allow it to go up another 20 feet if they felt like it was necessary.
Correct. And it would require a staff review before that.
Thank you. My next
And could I just, I want to make sure, I just reading Clayton's expression. So I just want to be clear on this. So it sounds like, in accordance with federal law, AT&amp;T would have to apply in Placer County's jurisdiction for a minor use permit modification.
Yes.
And we could condition it with the way it appeared probably or some other things. But we could not deny the height extension. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And it's 20 feet or 10%. And the reason that they would need to come in for that is if there weren't enough, I guess, locations on the existing tower and they needed to bump it up to provide another co-location site on that tower.
Are there any other, in terms of the conditions that I'm trying to envision as it relates to this kind of a tower, Clayton? What kinds of things would we actually have authority regarding as compared to the height?
Well, you would have the opportunity to condition it, but you wouldn't be able to limit the height impact. So that height would be allowed by, right?
Those kinds of things, I suppose.
Right. Coverage, yes. I guess maybe, yeah, the way the monopine covers it. But you wouldn't be able to prevent the height from occurring.
Got it. Thanks. Sorry, Bonnie.
That's fine. Thank you. My next question is, why, why was there not a mitigated NIGDAC for this project versus Verizon when they started? they started in 2017?
So, these are two completely different projects, different sites, different locations. I believe that one was a taller tower and required a lot of grading. There's a whole hillside with a bunch of trees. They were going to grade in a road and put retaining walls in there as well. So, I think it was taller and a lot more grading.
Okay.
This project, basically all the grading they're doing is there's some trenching required to get kind of the infrastructure to this location. And they're basically just improving, putting gravel on top of the road to get it satisfactory for utility trucks to come in.
So, speaking of grading, right, the question I have is the access to the driveway and the sightline and maybe that's what the 116 is, I'm totally sure. But as I walk to that area, right, there's not a there's if you're making turns left or right, it's a blind corner. So, do we have, because that's an existing driveway, is that why it's allowed? Or if they were to come in and have this project, what would they have to do as far as making sure that there's a line of sight to turn into that property?
Gotcha. Just one thing I want to note, the condition of approval was Plate 116 or as approved by DPW. So, if they're not able to meet the 116, they can work with DPW on finding what works for the site. But in terms of the 116, so basically when you see a driveway and it kind of opens up at the end, that's called like an engineering plate. So, you know, for larger commercial operations, it needs to be bigger. This is, I believe, a pretty typical one for residential properties. So, with that plate, there's certain sight distance on each side. There's a certain amount of feet you need to be able to see when you're pulling out to meet safety. Due to this site being right on the curve, they're not going to have the ability, just how the site is, to look that far because it curves back this way. And so, that's why they added or as approved by DPW so they can work with them.
Okay. So, to clarify, what you're saying is that even though there's not good line of sight based on where that driveway is, because it's in a residential area, there's no real requirement to improve that site to make to allow for a better sightline. Is that correct? Or maybe, I mean, we've got.
If we have engineering staff here as well.
I would like to understand that a little bit, you know, because I saw the appellant's line of sight and it's.
I'll let Eric.
Large area.
From speak over half of that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Eric Griffin with Engineering and Surveying. So, the line of sight there, there you can't make that line of sight. It's a sharp corner, as you mentioned. But there are going to be improvements. Right now, it's just kind of dirt going into the gate. So, they're going to have to pave the encroachment going into the site, which is going to create a 25-foot taper for that area. Coming out of that corner, I don't think you'll be able to reach that 25-foot taper. So, they're going to improve it to the best way necessary as approved by DPW. But also, the area in front of like the garage where they have is going to be paved in front of that too. And then, looking at the road right side taper is going to extend beyond that. So, it's going to create a wider area, which is going to be 20, maybe 25 feet extra sight distance. So, I think right now you have about 80, 85 feet and that'll put it around 100, maybe 105. So, it'll improve it a little bit, but it's not going to reach the 385 sight distance I think that's required.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. I think that's it for my questions. Actually, one other question.
All right.
And that is, so this project went to the zoning administrator, but didn't go to the MAC. So, why did it not go to the MAC? Because it didn't, why did the project not go to the MAC originally? Or was it because we didn't have to do a NECDAC or something? Or I'm just trying to understand why the residents didn't have the opportunity to weigh in and Karen's going to answer the question.
Well, I'm not going to answer the entire question, but I will say that under the zoning code, a MAC is consulted when the planning commission essentially has the original jurisdiction. So, when a project is being heard by the MAC, the MAC in that area is contacted. This went to the zoning administrator. So, I'm only answering it from the standpoint of the code that it's not fatal to bring this project forward on appeal that it didn't go first to a MAC.
Okay. Thank you. But I think one of the things we'd like to see is the residents being involved in projects. I think that's the part that's most important. All right. Thank you. That's it for my questions.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank you, Bennett and your staff. I know you've been working on this for a long time. And I want to thank my colleagues for going, taking the time to go out and visit the site and visit with the residents out there. And I thank you for your questions regarding this whole issue. And I've given this issue a lot of thought, actually about 1:30 this morning, I woke up thinking about it. And I see the I see the concern about public safety. But I clearly understand the concerns of the applicants and the impact this tower will have on their rural lifestyle. Some have lived here for many, many years, some for generations. It's my extended family and still lives out in that area. Mr. Wrightout's family still lives out there after generations. And the board is, you know, we've gone through rural changes. We got all the fruit ranches are gone. And as the Board of Supervisors, and my goal and the board's goal to preserve our agricultural heritage and our rural lifestyle. We've seen many young families move in and with children and we welcome them. And what I've heard today is they have no concerns with the internet coverage. So, it'll be my request to the provider to find another location that does not intrude on the residence of the surrounding area. And I'll be voting in favor of granting the appeal of the planning commission's decision.
Suzanne, then Cindy.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to start by some technical questions. How far is the coverage of a cell tower in terms of miles?
I would have to ask AT&amp;T on that one.
Yes. One of my questions also, so please come up.
Hi, Jared Kersley with AT&amp;T. The question is, how far does a cell tower cover? That's.
In fact, if I could just add on to.
Sure.
What I'm looking at the maps, trying to compare the before and after coverage. And I'm trying to contemplate Interstate 80. It's not real clear on the maps. Looks to me like there's a huge amount of improved coverage going to the east and somewhat north, which is to an extent, I know follows Interstate 80. So, I'm line of sight technology and distance and alternative sites, those kinds of things are, I think, what we're getting at.
Right. So, in general, if you're on flat like farmland, you could cover three miles, two miles radius, two, three, sometimes a little bit more, depends on tree heights and such. In rural areas, I'm sorry, rural hilly areas with hilly terrain and a lot of trees, that question isn't as linear of an answer that I wish I could provide. So, while the bottom west site might cover a mile and a half radius and the top, I'm sorry, the northeast might cover the similar, it's really unknown when you have hills surrounding you and trees. Rural thumb is roughly a mile, mile and a half radius, but again, there's asterisks next to that answer with terrain. So, it's really hard to answer.
Is it exclusively line of sight?
Okay. Yeah, good question. Your cell phone, no. Your cell phone will pick up the signal in the sky. The high-speed broadband internet, yes, it is. That's why we're in this area of Ofer and not towards Highway 80. It's filling, it's fulfilling living unit coverage, LUs as we call them in the CAF II terminology, basically a dwelling. We're trying to cover as many dwellings in this area as possible under the CAF II project. That's why this project is being funded in this area.
So, the product type is internet stuff, coverage primarily?
Yes. That's what drives the height requirement mainly because you need line of sight to homes. Each home, whoever wants to sign up for AT&amp;T wireless broadband internet services can sign up. They have a technician come to their house. They have a little square antenna installed somewhere on their property that has a good vantage point to the tower and that's what provides them the wireless internet.
Thanks.
So, technically, if the tower was taller, it would reach more people?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And if it's lower and or at a lower elevation, it's not going to reach.
Right. So, kind of leads me to the idea that you guys, in order to compromise with the community, you lowered the height of the tower, but then we all find out that if you go and apply for a use permit, then FCC precludes us from denying that. So, basically, you could get right back to where you were when you started from.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to ask to respond to that comment.
Okay.
So, the intent behind that code with the FCC is to prevent additional towers being installed in the area of this of a certain tower. So, it's not an intent for a carrier to spend, you know, it's a very expensive cost to extend a tower even 20 feet. A lot of engineering goes into it and equipment just to gain a little bit more service. So, this tower has been designed to fulfill their service gap and to allow for co-location opportunities for other carriers to prevent other carriers come on. Most of the time, we see extensions requirements are either it's a really old tower and it wasn't engineered correctly from, you know, the 90s or what have you. So, you need to either drop and swap it or add a lot of technology to add extra bracing so you could allow for additional carriers. But usually, it's also when you have shorter towers that don't allow for enough space below the existing antennas to, you know, provide good services. In this case, that's not, that's not the case. We have an 80-foot red, antenna height is the highest, right below that's 70 feet and then 60 feet. So, there's plenty of space on this tower to prevent the need for a tower extension. So, I understand the community's concern. That's just not the reality of our industry. And I can't prove that, I can't guarantee that, of course, in front of you, but that's just not the reality.
Okay. Thank you. And my next question really is regarding the consistency and consideration with presenting it to the MAC based on the fact that the previous tower was presented to the MAC. To me, that's just, it's inconsistent to present one, but yet not present the other. And this was pre-COVID, so it wasn't pre-COVID that precluded presenting to the MAC. So, that's a just a comment. As far as, I did want to point out that the zoning administrator was not able to make or to the findings necessary necessary to approve the project so that therefore, when it went to the planning commission, if you look in the report, the planning commission's comments, they did not address the lack of findings from the zoning administrator, not one lack of finding. All they discussed was the need for safety infrastructure during emergency events, reliability and adequacy of existing cellular coverage in the project area and coverage deficiencies in nearby areas where drop where drop calls had been reported. So, I'm a little disappointed that the planning commission didn't address anything that the zoning administrator determined when he denied the this. So, then, so therefore, I don't agree with the planning commission's findings, but that also leads me to inquire with Cal Fire as to the infrastructure in this area. Is this infrastructure insufficient to accomplish your mission? Because according to the planning commission, we need, they're saying that we need infrastructure during emergency events. Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's why he's here? He's been sitting here waiting for an opportunity.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Brian Estes, County Fire Chief. In regards to your question specifically about infrastructure supervisor, I think we could probably frame that in two ways. There's infrastructure in regards to, you know, radio towers for our VHF radios and then there's the infrastructure for cell phones, which would be applicable to things like Placer Alert or our ability to use cell phones in an emergency incident. Currently, we don't see any negative impact to either our VHF system or our cellular system in that general area associated with Meadowwood Lane. I can't speak to Placer Alert. That would be the sheriff's office's jurisdiction.
Okay. Do you know what FirstNet is?
I am familiar with FirstNet as a provider, but I don't have any intimate knowledge about the service itself.
So, you don't use FirstNet services?
We don't use FirstNet as a sole provider or anything. They're just, they're just a part of the AT&amp;T system. That's my knowledge base of it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, my question is about FirstNet. I was told maybe the AT&amp;T. Can you come back and tell me about FirstNet? Something about this particular tower was going to provide dedicated lines for emergency events?
Yeah. So, on our wireless, our new wireless sites, we're building out the FirstNet network. So, right now, in Placer County at the Auburn Airport, we're currently constructing a FirstNet priority site, which is for FirstNet responders, whether it's Placer County officials or if there's a wildfire and other agencies who are using FirstNet services are responding to that fire, they would request FirstNet services and whether it's a deployable, a cold to sell on light trucks. If for whatever reason cellular network went down and first responders needed to use that service, FirstNet would be working with those local first responders to fight that fire.
So, FirstNet's not really something that's installed throughout Placer County?
It's getting there. It's installed throughout with the cell towers as we build them or they're added on to the cell towers since we've been building out FirstNet throughout the country since 2017, 2018.
Okay. Do you know anything about Connect, the Connect America Fund?
Yeah. So, that's the broadband fund that we've been discussing that is run by the FCC.
So, is that, is that grant funding?
That's funding that the carriers sign up for through different rounds of grant funding to support underserved areas throughout the country.
Okay. So, what's the requirement for that to get grant funding for?
You have to build out to a certain amount of living units within a certain amount of years. So, we're up to that 2021. It's about five years. So, we're getting close. So, for this area, this would be, you know, we might not be able to come back with fixed wireless internet for this specific area, depending on the fundings, let's say, if we come back in a couple of years. But for right now, that availability is still there for new customers.
Okay. Great. And then, my last one actually was about the raising your towers, but I think that question was already answered. Thank you. I just, I basically just trying to connect the dots with why the zoning administrator denied this in the first place. And I find that the planning commission failed to appeal those findings and find properly to deny, to deny the appeal. So, that's where I'm at. I'm found lacking in evidence to support.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Denying the appeal. Thank you.
Cindy.
Bennett, I had a question for you too. Sorry, making everybody jump up and down today. Do we do an independent analysis of the data that's presented to us by AT&amp;T or any provider when they're citing the cell tower?
We do not.
Okay.
I might, if we saw some red flags or something, we might, you know, answer, ask a few more questions, but typically our review process isn't verifying what they submitted to us.
Okay. Great. That was my only question. And I'll just make some comments then. You know, we've had a lot of testimony today that there isn't a gap. And I know AT&amp;T says there is, but I'm hearing testimony from our constituents, our taxpayers, that there isn't a gap. I'm hearing that also from our public safety officials. And while I do think cell towers are absolutely essential, we are relying on them for public safety and alerts to our citizens. It is a public service and it seems like we should be doing some sort of independent analysis so that we, as elected board members, really can take an objective look that's credible with the community. It's always hard. It isn't a matter of a reflection on AT&amp;T. I'm looking at you two in the back. It's not a reflection on AT&amp;T, but we're always skeptical, citizens are skeptical of private enterprise. on AT&amp;T, but we're always skeptical. Citizens are skeptical of private enterprise and what they tell us they need and must have in order to move forward. But with that, I agree with Suzanne and Jim that I don't think the provider has proven there's a service gap. I'm looking at the top of page 201 in our staff report, and that this is the least intrusive solution to a gap that might exist. And so based on that, I would support the appeal of this of the project, so.
Okay, and then while you're up there, Bennett, just to clarify a couple of things. And you were done, Cindy, right?
Yes, I was.
So reconciling a little bit more, I think, the prior project in 17 versus this project. And so it required its beginning of life, if you will, was the requirement of a conditional use permit and environmental review that required it to go to a MAC. This project was considerably less significant, and therefore it was allowed to go directly to the zoning administrator. So our rule says that you go to the MAC if you're going as your original hearing body, the planning commission. So I understand that, and I could see how in that this has gotten the attention of so many people who live close to it, there's this perception of difference, but I can actually understand how that unraveled. The environmental review, a little bit more clarity, the sounds like the prior project also was more intrusive as it related to the the foundation disturbance and maybe some other things, which was the cause of the difference between the minor use permit and conditional use permit, and thus a different standard going in as related to requiring a different CPO analysis, mitigated NIC deck as compared to this. So that's accurate too, right?
Yes, that that sounds accurate. So my my it was not my project. One of my colleagues worked on that one, but I did take a look at it. So the big difference between those, the tower was a lot taller. I believe there was a lot less trees on the site, so there's a lot more vistas seeing the cell tower, and they had to do some pretty significant grading to get on to onto the site.
Do you happen to know if the average lot size was about the same or were they our larger lot sizes?
I do not know for sure, but my general knowledge of the area, I think they're roughly the same.
Okay.
Lot size.
No, that's good. I just wanted to make that record clear and make sure I understood how things two projects, which might be contrived as being very similar. And what what we ended up with here was a lot of community interest, period. So I think all of us probably would have preferred that it went to the MAC in the first place, but it didn't. But I can understand how that happened. But the good news is, everybody did get the word and everybody had a chance to have their day here, which is what's most important. So so thanks.
And it would have ended up here anyway, I have a feeling.
Right, right.
You know, in in all reality, I think.
But there's important in that perception and reality that we work so hard, I think, to make sure that there's
Community.
genuine transparency and outreach and the perception that that's the case. And I just I wanted to spend some time on that, I guess. So thanks. And I'll just I suspect there might be a motion around the corner because I see a like. But based on other comments, I live down the road some fair amount, probably bigger lot size by on average by a significant amount. But I'm in kind of a basin, and I have actually pretty mediocre cell service. And, you know, I get the controversy. It's a hard trade off, and it's not criticism of the providers of these services. We all use them and need them. But my cell service is not very good, and my internet service is also not that great. But I wouldn't want a cell tower next to me. And I, you know, I made that choice. So I just want to make sure that there's clarity on the record as to how the staff reviewed this process and the procedures that we go through and what we've embraced as we went forward. And have you a chance, Bennett, to to explain some of that. So with that, Supervisor Holmes, I'm guessing you have a motion?
Before supervise, excuse me, before Supervisor Holmes presents a motion, listening to the board, I want to go over some procedural aspects here. As you know, staff brings forward the recommendation or the action from the prior body. So that particular recommendation is to deny the appeal. If the boards chooses to to grant the appeal, we need to continue this item to prepare findings. Now, that being said, I also want to turn this over to Clayton to explain the shot clock and a little about those particular findings before we get to the motion.
Thanks, Karen.
Yes, so under the Federal Telecommunications Act, there is what's called a shot clock, which is basically a requirement, a timing requirement, that these applications for wireless facilities must be determined by the the hearing body or the the entity. For for this type of application, that timing requirement is 150 days. Obviously, this project has been around a while beyond that 150 days. My understanding is that staff and the applicant AT&amp;T at some point had discussions about tolling that requirement to get to this process today. But I'm not 100% sure as to kind of when that 150 days would expire, when the tolling would expire. So I would just I guess my recommendation would be if we are continuing this down the road, perhaps asking the applicant if they would agree to toll it till we get to that final determination timeframe to make sure that we have complied with that requirement. Because the penalty, if you extend past that 150 days, it's an automatic approval of the request. So I wanted to make sure that we are covered in that respect before proceeding and delaying this.
How much time do you need to prepare the findings? I've tried to lay out at least. I think we've all tried to lay out our arguments.
I think it's safe to say that that June 22 is far too soon, and it's also very impacted particular agenda. I'm I'm shooting from the hip because we have to discuss whether those findings actually can be made and analyze that because there are limited findings to deny a cell tower, as you've read in your staff report. So I'm kind of looking around, wondering if the July 6, and I'm looking at Megan as well as planning staff, whether that's sufficient time if because unfortunately, your next board meeting is also in Tahoe. So I'm.
The one after that?
Yes, yes, yeah, the second meeting in July is Tahoe.
July 6 would be.
Right. Is that? At least from our side, it's sufficient time, but I'm kind of looking at planning and wondering if that's also sufficient time.
I thought that was you, EJ. I thought that was you.
I wasn't sure. I was going to be able to stand up after sitting that long. So I made it. I mean, July 6 could work. There are other items on that agenda that planning's involved with. You know, going to the next hearing would be preferred to make sure we get all the findings correct. So I'm not but we can. We can make either one.
Well, it should be a procedural item on the subsequent agenda, correct? Because we have a power-packed agenda. They actually all are likely, but but I think that would work from our perspective.
Do you want to stick with the July 6?
No.
You want to go to the July 26?
I think we counted June 22 out.
It's fairly impacted, and we need sufficient time to really discuss about.
Correct. So we're looking at July 6 as soonest.
And that's your preference, correct?
My preference would be the second meeting in July.
That's what I thought.
You would prefer the June 27 or July 27. Thanks, sorry. You would like July 27 in Tahoe.
When we get there, let me know. But yes, June, yes, second meeting in July. Thank you.
Yeah, the problem is so many of the community that are here, the meeting is located in Tahoe.
Oh, the second meeting in July. I'm sorry. I didn't catch that. Yeah, that's we. Yeah, that's that's problematic.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love everybody to come up and visit, but you know.
We have another option that we've talked about. There could be the possibility in that if this is very procedural and not very lengthy, we might have another issue whereby we might want to meet at nine or 10:00 in the morning on Monday before we go out to Lake Tahoe, the 21st.
Make me drive two ways that day.
26.
Well, you could zoom in, Cindy.
Sorry, I can zoom in.
You could zoom in, yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, planning would be good with that.
Okay. And you that's your preference, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Of course it is. Sure understood.
But we also need to make sure the tolling
Correct.
Is acceptable. Yeah.
So before after the motion is made, do we want to ask the tolling question or and?
We want to ask the tolling question first and have it on the record.
And the tolling question is of the applicant, not the appellant, correct?
Correct.
So if you'd be so good just to.
Jared Cruzley with on behalf of AT&amp;T. So typically, how tolling agreements work is either staff or AT&amp;T request a tolling agreement. My job is to get that tolling agreement request to AT&amp;T's attorneys. They look it over and go from there. That's how their process is. I can't speak right now on behalf of if they will sign the tolling agreement or not. That's just how the process is. They usually do with jurisdictions. They usually like to play ball. So but again, no guarantee, and that's just up to them and all the other variables that go on.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we'd really like to work with AT&amp;T in the future on a site that's more appropriate. How's that?
I understand. I'm just the messenger.
I know, I know. Tough job for you.
Yep.
And thank you.
If I if I could,
Yep.
given that request, I'm not 100% sure how much time is left on the 150 days. I don't know if AT&amp;T might know or if staff might know. But that if there is a certain amount of time left on that, that would give us some flexibility to at least see if we can reach an agreement on extending that out.
So but I think in the meantime, we're going to do the best we can, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So taking us all the way back to Supervisor Holmes.
So now I make a motion to continue the item until July the 6th at 9 o'clock. July the 26th at 9 o'clock.
Be the 21st.
26. It would be the 26.
Wait a second. Why would we continue it?
Well, I think.
You can't actually.
Can't we?
We need to make findings.
Yeah, but can't we acknowledge our intent like we do on major projects where the?
Oh, yes, in terms of you certainly may. In fact, we'd recommend you do that. We were having a sidebar as to whether it's prudent, because we don't know when the 150 days is going to run is is our dilemma right this second, not wanting it to be deemed approved, and wondering if what we need to do, and I don't even know if it runs before the next meeting, whether what we need to do is tentatively continue it to the 22nd despite the fact that it's a very impacted agenda. But mind you, we would be coming back with something fairly narrow. And again, I don't know if the 150 days runs or if AT&amp;T will agree to a tolling. If it does run, we run that risk. As long as the board knows that, then the recommendation would be that you take you make a tentative motion simply on the appeal, whether we're granting it or denying it, and then continue it to a time certain on the 22nd. I think that's about the best we can do.
Or 21st?
June 22.
The Monday, the 21st before.
No, I'm back to the 22nd of June because my concern is
Oh, June.
AT&amp;T doesn't is not going to agree to a tolling.
I got it.
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion would be that it's essentially our intent to grant the appeal, but continue it for the purpose of completing findings and do that to a date certain sometime on June 22.
Yeah. Yes. And and it would be to continue it till 9:00 AM or soon thereafter on June 22.
That's my motion.
That was easy. Motion, Holmes, second, Suzanne, Supervisor Jones. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, thank you. And we will now take up our 2:30 timed item.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse on this item. My husband's engineering firm does some work for the project applicant, so.
Thanks, Cindy. And this is the approval of tourist accommodation transfer agreements, et cetera, for the Tahoe City Lodge project.
You got it, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Erin Casey here with the county executive office.
And Erin.
Maybe I'll give people a moment to clear out. Yep. All right, ready? All right, let's get the show started or ended, probably for you all. You've been here all day. Good afternoon, Erin Casey with the county executive office here to present this item to your board this afternoon. I'm actually very excited to be here to share this with you. This is an exciting day for us as it relates to the incentives program. We've been working on this for a number of years, have sought direction from your board on numerous occasions, and now we're here with an agreement, a proposed set of agreements, and an application for the Tahoe City Lodge. I'm going to present the first half of the slides, and then Nick Martin will get up and conclude the presentation by providing a little bit more detail on the agreements attached to the staff report. I did, before I get into a bit of detail, want to say thank you to your board for your continued support and guidance on this program. It's been essential and helpful to us as we have tried to work with developers and our community to come up with the best program that we can. That's actually going to affect change in the Tahoe Basin as it relates to development. Also want to thank county council and specifically Rob Sandman, who's here today, who's been instrumental to us in putting these documents together and helping to provide guidance to staff, as well as Nick Martin and Paul Griffith, who's also here to answer questions. Nick is new to the county and has really hit the ground running and very thankful to him for all of his work on this as well. The presentation will cover just a summary of the incentives program. I won't spend a lot of time on this since we've covered it most recently in the last couple of months. The Tahoe City Lodge Project overview, tourist accommodation units, the transient occupancy tax rebate, and then board discussion and action. Just a little bit on the incentives program. You can see there in the picture, that's the cover of the document. That provides all the detailed information for those who may have interest in the program itself. It was initially approved by your board on May 17 of 2016. It was designated to offset the costs, development costs in the Tahoe Basin. As you know, we have not had any new lodging product developed since the 1960s. So it's been a long time since anything new has been developed in the basin. There was a study conducted to try to understand the issues, and this program was designed in response to that. The program includes development rights and infrastructure cost offsets, including the tourist accommodation units, which you'll hear a little bit more about later. We did add a transient occupancy tax rebate in July of 2020, which your board approved, and then we made some revisions to that component of the program most recently in 2021. This is a picture of the Tahoe City Lodge project. I'll provide a little bit of information on it. The developer and applicant, Samir Tuma, is also here and can provide more information on the project itself. But it is a proposed 118-unit condo tell. It will include one, two, and three-bedroom condo units. It also has several hotel amenities, including a restaurant, a rooftop bar. There's going to be a new clubhouse. In fact, the existing clubhouse on the Tahoe City Golf Course, which the county had a role in purchasing, will be redeveloped and will include a second floor. There will be conference space associated with that, and then there will also be shared-use parking and a fairly robust restoration project on the Tahoe City Golf Course site. So several benefits of this project, which is why the county has been supporting the project over the years. And your board did approve the EIR for this alongside the Tahoe Basin Area Plan back in 2016. And this is just for your board and the public's information, the location of the project. It will be in Tahoe City. You can see there the intersection of 28 and 89 where the Tahoe City Lodge is relative to that and relative to Lake Tahoe. It's located right in the center of our town center there. It will provide an experience that isn't available currently, and people will have the ability to walk throughout the community, walk to the beach, walk to the parks, won't need to use their vehicle. And then you can And then you can see the Tahoe City Golf Course is right behind the proposed facility and the location. With that, I'm going to invite Nick Martin to come up and provide a little bit more information to your board on the TAUs and the TOT rebate component of the project.
Thank you, Erin. Good afternoon, Chair Wiegand and members of the board. I'll give a little bit of detail on what is in the two agreements that we have before you today. So in the tourist accommodation agreement, sorry, the tourist accommodation unit transfer agreement, a little bit of background on, on the tourist accommodation units and how the county has banked these over the years. So that's a major component of the incentives program is for the county, per your board's previous direction in the approved program, is to seek these TAUs for development projects that meet the criteria of the program. And currently, there are 206 of these TAUs that the county has banked. The applicant is requesting 60 of those for this project. The project, as Erin mentioned, has 118 units. So 58 of the tourist accommodation units have already been acquired or converted on the property from previous commercial floor area through a conversion program with, with TRPA. And with the, the 60 units that are being requested, the county has purchased those for a value of around $12,250. And the loan that is being proposed in the agreement has a principal value of $879,000. And so that balance will be paid down by the project through the TOT generated from the project itself. And that is required as part of the agreement to be paid down within a 15-year period. For the TOT rebate component, which is a newly, the newest added component to the incentive program, as your board gave previous direction in, in May, this rebate will be for 80% of the TOT generated of the project to go back to the applicant over a 20-year period. And, and that is, and that will be paid first to the, to the developer. And the remaining 20% is going to be what is used to pay back the TAU loan amount, as well as half of that going towards the County General Fund. And it's important to note that the, the rebate is, the, the 80% of the TOT, sorry, the, the 80% rebate is, obviously, has a range of values of what that could be depending on the TOT that's generated from the site. And what staff has done, as you'll see in the staff report, is made an approximation that is in alignment on the high end with what the applicant is proposing, roughly around the 800, the, sorry, $1 million mark of TOT generated annually. And the county has provided a low range to that as well, depending on various other factors. So in the program itself, there's some, some site-specific flexibilities that are allowed for within the program, and two of those are to be considered here. The first one is that the program identifies an annual payback of the TOT rebate. However, the applicant has requested that those payments be made on a monthly basis. And county staff has worked internally and believe that that is an appropriate request, that can be met per the applicant's request. And then the second is the professional management of the properties themselves. So it's a, the project has proposed 78 condo units, condo tell units, and 40 hotel units. So the 40 units will be professionally managed in-house, and the 78 units, while the, the program specifies a property manager for those units, the, the applicant can speak in more detail to this in a minute, but those, those 78 condo tell units, if the, if required to be under the same professional management as the hotel units, may, may present a challenge for the resale of those units because of a, a triggering a securities transaction for those units as opposed to real property. And like I said, the, the applicant can speak in more detail to that. That is a bit out of my area of expertise. And however, there, it is important to note that all 118 units will still have the deed restriction where the owner is only allowed to occupy the units for a maximum of 90 days in a calendar year. So the action before your board today is to conduct this public hearing on the application from Keyla Tahoe for the transfer of 60 TAUs and payment of a TOT rebate, and to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of 60 TAUs to Keyla Tahoe pursuant to the terms of the program and TAU transfer agreement, and then to adopt an additional resolution authorizing the payment of a TOT rebate to Keyla Tahoe pursuant to the terms of the program and the OCA agreement. And with that, we are available for any questions you have, and I believe the applicant, if allowed, would like to present to your board as well.
Thanks, thank you. Any questions at this point of staff? Let's then hear from the applicant who has a presentation, and I think we've got slide copies of PowerPoint presentation included. One second, Samir.
There we go, the magic of technology. Good afternoon, Chair Wiegand, members of the board. Samir Tuma on behalf of Tahoe City Lodge and Keyla Tahoe LLC. I was going to ask a little quiz to start this game show out today, which was, do you know what you were doing on June 8th, 2013?
Yes.
What were you doing?
I was probably sitting in a city council meeting in Roseville.
Probably. Well, I was sitting in an office negotiating a deal to buy the property that very soon will be the Tahoe City Lodge.
2013.
2013, eight years ago.
I was right here.
And, you know, so, so it's been, it's been a while. And, you know, come, come to realize as we're coming into this afternoon's discussion that there were only two current board members who were on the board at the time we started this process. And so I thought it would be helpful to talk a little bit about, a little about where we've been, but mostly in the context of highlighting why this is a really great project, not only for, for the developer, but more importantly in this context, for the community and for the county. Let's see if I can get this right. Here we go. So, you know, we had commissioned very early on a study done by Jones Lang LaSalle, which is a global hotel management, or hotel development company. And I, as I understand, the county has used JLL for some work themselves on various different projects. And what they, what they did, they did an economic impact study for us. And they told us that based on the project we were proposing in 2014 at that time, that there would be enormous economic benefit to the community in the form of significant dollars coming in during construction, 43 million plus, a little over $8 million a year in taxes, jobs, and visitor spending directly in the economy. Almost 400 jobs created during construction with an ongoing 76 jobs, full-time equivalent jobs, created once the lodge property is up and running. This, I think, as most of you know by now, would be the first new lodging property in North Lake Tahoe in the basin in 50 years. And so hopefully, it is by no means the last. And that's part of the idea here when we first entered into agreements and discussions with the county, was to provide a boost or a catalyst to additional revitalization. And we're, we're, we've seen a lot of activity since 2013, since we entered into the contract to buy this. There's been a lot more development activity. Not all of it, we can claim, but certainly, I think we've been a piece of creating an environment where there's a lot more interest in development in the community. As was alluded to earlier, the county was a, was a big player in purchasing the golf course, which this property backs up to. That was with, with county funds, with PUD funds, some from the airport and the resort association. But the idea was to try to retain this recreational asset in the community for use by community members. And so we have to look at, you know, how does this project impact the community, and in this case particularly, the, the golf course. Part of the deal that we, that we struck and is required under our agreements is that we will build a new clubhouse somewhere in the, along the site of where the existing one is. And that clubhouse on the ground floor will be, essentially have the same functions and services that they have today, but in a much better, new, modern design, laid out properly and that sort of thing. The big addition is the upstairs. And the upstairs will be equal footprint to the downstairs, about 4,000 square feet. And that space will be used for a variety of things. The hotel will be able to host events, particularly during slow season. That's a way you, shoulder seasons. That's the way you draw business to the area. But it's also available for the county to use and the PUD and the community to use for, when it's not being used by the hotel. We, through the, the guests who are staying at the golf course, there's going to be more business there. We're also revamping the whole parking infrastructure. There's a shared use parking. All that parking that's kind of been a mess and a bit cattywampus all gets cleaned up. We were, we are, Erin alluded to this, we're going to be restoring 1.7 acres of property on the golf course to SEZ, which was a big, important piece to the environmental community as we were going through this process. And then there's some other things with BMPs and signage, and really trying to help implement the goals of the partners who bought the golf course. The environmental benefits, these were huge for the environmental constituents, obviously, but also really kind of ingrained in our DNA. What's there now and what's been there historically has been really a difficult site from an environmental perspective. And this is an opportunity to clean that all up visually, but also reducing the amount of miles that people travel if they can stay in Tahoe City. They don't have to drive into Tahoe City to do activities. They're, they're there, sort of reduce miles. We are building to a lead standard, so that will have significant positive impacts for decades to come. Mentioned the restoration on the golf course. We're also reducing the total amount of coverage on site, which is unusual. But we were able to design a program that allowed us to have less coverage and therefore more natural infiltration into the ground. And so for those of you who weren't around then, this was a project that was not only not opposed by the league to save Lake Tahoe, but actually supported by the league, and they came out and testified on our behalf. First time that had happened in decades. So we think it's a really solid environmental project. So, you know, people throw around win-win, and we want to have a win-win, and this and that. I actually think this is a win-win-win. I think this is a situation where, you know, it's a really strong economic impact for the community, a really great cleanup of some environmental issues, and it's just going to revitalize an area and catalyze additional growth as we go forward. So I, I cannot stress enough the thanks and appreciation I have for the PUD, as well as, as the county itself, in cooperating with partnerships and working through issues, and ultimately being our partner on this enormously important project. I am around and obviously will be here throughout, but I just wanted to kind of bring people up a little bit through the history and remind them of why this is such a great thing for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Samir. Any questions? I see none. So this is a public hearing, and I am currently-
If you'd like to do that, can I ask a question?
Yes.
And it's actually, none of you, Samir, and I see, I saw Andy Sisk was here.
Yes.
But in the staff report, there was a request for the, the TOT rebates to be done monthly, right? And so I just want to check with Andy's staff to make sure that works. Because I don't know if you do a lot of that, and I just want to make sure that y'all are aware of it and that that works.
Yeah, they checked with the auditors and we can talk about that.
Okay, they checked with the auditors and it's something you can do. Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. Good. So now we will open up the public hearing.
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Sure you don't want to wait a moment or two?
Let's close the public hearing. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board? We're being asked to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of the TAUs as discussed, and then another resolution authorizing the payment of a TOT rebate with regards to the Economic Development Incentive Program as discussed.
Mr. Chair, that would be also incorporating the findings and the secret determination.
Thank you.
I would like to move approval of the item, and I, I really appreciate just getting the background since we were not here eight years ago. But really exciting to actually work with a partner to find a way to move economic development in the basin forward. I think it's terrific. And I think the, the one thing that would never have happened is, if we didn't build a new hotel, there would be no additional TOT dollars and the additional economic impact that would happen as a result of a project like this. So this is just terrific to be a part of. Thank you for doing hard work eight years ago and then the continued eight work, eight work over the last eight years, Erin, your team, and Samir. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the item.
Second. Motion Gore, second, Holmes. And I'll just quickly add that if you were here this morning, you would have learned that half a century ago, when the last time a hotel complex was built, I was a young man. And as of tomorrow, I won't be. So, you know, the, we grappled with this over all the years that I've been here and Jim, in terms of trying to incentivize essentially what has become a very difficult economic climate, largely because of a huge layer of regulation with Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. And, you know, over the years, we've worked out things and managed to, to, to get some things done up there that are important. But there hasn't been a hotel built in Placer County forever. So it's, it's hard to know exactly what the right mix of incentives are and how much they should be, and we could argue about that forever, but we're starting something now and, and we're going to see something happen. And hopefully, there'll be a couple of the things that are starting right afterwards. So with that-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes.
No, you don't want to hear it from me at this hour. We would like you to take these as two separate actions.
Okay, great.
Robert, can I make a comment?
Yes. So we're going to take the two separately. So Suzanne, why don't you make your comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I was just hoping that because of this, that this would encourage developers in future, future development in the Tahoe City area. I think it would be a welcome thing and should be exciting.
So Bonnie, can you-
So I will move to adopt a resolution, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 60 TAUs to Keyla Tahoe LLC.
So it's late. Rob just reminded me that we have a request before that one, and it's, it's embedded in number one. So the first motion that you're making is-
Transfer the TAUs?
I'm sorry?
All right. So I want to move that we transfer the 60 TAUs.
Thank you.
Motion Gore, second, Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else we need to-
Yes, and then-
We just transferred the TAUs.
And then the second one is, what's the second one? Because I thought that was number two.
Second was the resolution.
Supervisor Gore, if I could. The item one incorporates both the approval of the TAUs and the approval of the OCA as part of the incentives program. And I would suggest if the motion could be amended to incorporate both of those actions, then we'll get to items two and three.
All right. So I'm going to do number one. We're not only pointing to transfer the, move to transfer the 60 TAUs and payment of a TOT rebate for 118-unit lodge in Tahoe City and approve the application for both incentives. That's my motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Motion Gore, second, Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now I can read number two. All right. So now I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of 60 TAUs to Keyla Tahoe LLC pursuant to the terms of the NLT Economic Development Incentives Program and a TAU transfer agreement.
Second. Motion Gore, second, Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, yes, adopt a resolution authorizing the payment of a TOT rebate to Keyla Tahoe LLC pursuant to the terms of the NLT Economic Development Incentives Program and the OCA agreement.
Second. Motion Gore, second, Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That concludes our business of the day, and we are adjourned. Thank you.